The warrant has been duly posted and published, and I hereby waive the reading of the warrant. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As is our custom and tradition, we take this time at the start of town meeting to honor those former town officials who have passed since our last annual town meeting. In no particular order, Ernest Alex Jr., Marcia Johnston, Thelma Rovinsky, Elizabeth Sunquist, Rosemary Kalman, Edward William Musso, James Phalen, Thomas Howard, and Margaret Callahan. Can we have a moment of silence? Thank you. So I want to introduce some of the players for town meeting here tonight. Starting with folks on my left are town clerk Carol Green, our finance director Todd Lindmark, newly elected select board member Kevin Roach. Congratulations, Kevin. Jim Lee Han, Anita Mecklenburg. Also on the select board are town administrator Justin Casanova Davis and two folks from town council, Tom Harrington and Andrew...
Bettinelli.
Bettinelli, sorry. Off of the stage, in front of the stage, we have the advisory board. They will be very active, making motions. Our chair is David Lutz, who will introduce his committee.
Thank you, Jay. To my far left, Michael G., Ken Fitzgerald, Moses Seer, Jason Craig, Brian Bichkowski, who's leaving us to join the Board of Library Trustees, and we're very sad to see him go, Rob Garrity, and Joyce Terrio.
Thank you. Our tellers tonight, to the extent that we have to count any votes, are Andrew Bakowski and Paul Terrio. Some rules for the meeting. We are governed by town meeting time, which is a treatise that has for parliamentary procedure, as well as some local bylaws. I will explain procedures as needed. I will recognize legitimate requests for points of order. As always, my goal here is to make sure that the folks here understand the parliamentary procedure that is happening. It is sometimes confusing. If you have a question as to exactly what we are voting on, please put your hand up and say point of order. Our main motions will generally be made by members of the advisory board. You will sometimes hear a motion for indefinite postponement. That essentially means a motion to kill the article or to take no action on the article. So if you hear that, that's what it means. Other people can make that motion as well. Those who make the motion will generally have the first opportunity to explain the purpose of the article and the purpose of the motion. Any debate, any subsidiary motions, and any discussion and questions must be within the scope of the article. That is, they must have a reasonable relationship to the matter being discussed. There are a number of big-ticket items here. I will have a pretty broad threshold of what I will allow, but if you are speaking about something or making a motion about something that is beyond the scope of that article, I will not allow it. Or I may redirect you or try and have you narrow the point you're trying to make. Motions and motions to amend must generally be in writing. We have some forms up here. We will help you with that language if need be. If there's a ministerial correction, a typo, a small change, I may accept that as a friendly amendment without going through a more formal process. We're going to be going through the warrant in order, except for Article 25, which is the MBTA zoning article. We're going to take that straight after Article 13, which is when we discuss committee reports. It's a significant matter, and I felt that we should have some discussion on it earlier in the meeting rather than later in the evening. You may only speak when recognized by the moderator. If you want to speak, come to a microphone. We have them in the front, at the bottom of the rows, and you can line up and be recognized there. If you are unable to come to a microphone and you want to speak, put your hand up, get our attention, we will get a microphone to you. I'm going to try and balance discussion between pro and con as much as I can. Sometimes it's not balanced, but I'll try and make sure all sides of every debate get a chance at the mic. Everyone has a chance to speak here tonight at a certain point. However, we want to avoid repetition. If I hear the same thing over and over again in terms of a comment on something, I may ask for something new. Once we get the gist, I think we can put that in our memory banks and hear a new comment. Max of five minutes first time to the mic, three minutes for a second time. Again, if you're getting repetitive, I may hurry you along. But also, if you need a little bit more time because you're making a very important point, I may let you go on longer. I do not have a clock on anyone. I may allow you to speak for a third time if it's particularly important or I think you have something to add to the debate. I hope we can have a spirited debate. I hope that this meeting can support pro and con in every way, shape, and form with respect. However, no personal comments. All comments must be civil and respectful. And while people are speaking, please respect their rights to speak. We don't need people shouting out from the audience, "I will tell you to stop." If comments stray beyond the limits, as I've noted, or if there's a disruption, I will ask you to stop. If you do not stop, you will be asked to leave. If anyone wants to film the meeting, they have a right to do so, but they have to let me know, and then I have to advise where they can do it from. But you absolutely have a right to film the meeting if that's what you'd like to do, but I need to know. Generally, for voting, I will ask for a voice vote on all motions. You don't need to shout. Everyone can be heard. It's not particularly helpful. It will chew into the time we have allotted. If I can't discern the result just from a voice vote, I may have you stand or do a show of hands. And if I still can't tell what vote prevails, then we will have the tellers count the vote. We'll do a standing count, and we'll count it that way. I do respect a call of the question or a motion to cut off debate. That is, if you think that it's gone on too long and we're just being repetitive, everyone here at this meeting has a right to say, "I called a question, I moved to cut off debate." However, if it's premature, I will reject it. If I still think that there's debate out there to be had that's important, I will reject it. If there are people lined up at the mics and it's their first time, I may hold your motion in abeyance while we get through the small amount of people that are left at the microphone. Again, I may also close down debate, too, if I feel that it's gone on enough and said, and I will move us to a vote if that is the case. There are a number of handouts on the table out there. I think they're all helpful handouts that explain a number of the articles. We're also going to have some AV here that will be helpful. One key handout that is out there is a multi-page summary of the budget that will be helpful when we do discuss the budget because we do allow discussion of line items in the budget. Before we get started, I'd like to give Select Board member Mecklenburg an opportunity to address the hall.
I thought we were both going to go. For the people who were at our select board meeting earlier, this is redundant, but I just wanted to... There's changes happening in our community, and I just kind of... I thought a lot about what I read on Facebook and what I was hearing people say, and I just wanted to put a preamble to our conversations today. Years ago, I read the book Anti-Fragile by Nassim Taleb, and he proposes that the opposite of fragile is not robust, but actually anti-fragile. In troubling times, some companies and organizations or relationships fail, and some grow. They don't just survive, but they grow. The challenges actually make them stronger, anti-fragile. We, as a community, are facing some stress and discomfort. We are certainly not all going to agree on the hows and the whats and the whys as we move forward. We can, however, choose to disagree without having it divide us. Our conversations can connect us even in disagreement. Jim, Kevin, and I, as Select Board, and in partnership with our town administrator, are committed to this. There is an African proverb that says, "If you want to go fast, go alone; but if you want to go far, go together." Norfolk anti-fragile doesn't exactly slip off the tongue. So maybe we could be Norfolk strong and go far together. Thank you.
Thank you. So without further ado, we're going to get right into the warrant. First article is Article II. First article of substance is Article II. It is the payment of prior year bills. Mr. Bichkowski.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone. Article II is printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Bichkowski.
The Advisory Committee recommends indefinite postponement of this article because there are no unpaid bills at this time.
It's been moved and seconded to indefinitely postpone. Again, that means that we're taking no action on the article. Seeing no one at the mics, we will go straight to a vote. Requires a simple majority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimously. Article III, current year budget transfers. Mr. Bichkowski.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of $63,026.87, to fund the budget transfers as displayed on the screen.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Bichkowski.
These are the budget transfers that have been requested from the town to pay outstanding... Not outstanding bills, but to cover the cost from this current year that are needed to cover.
Any questions, comments on Article III? Just moving a little money around. Seeing none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It passes unanimously. Article IV, collective bargaining agreements. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone. Article IV is printed in the warrant.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Fitzgerald.
State law requires collective bargaining agreements be submitted for approval at the town meeting for funding. As the writing of this notice, the town has yet to settle to open collective bargaining negotiations with the clerical workers and the DPW workers.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none?
Mr. Moderator, do you want me to take it? Or David? Mr. Moderator, I just want to amend that. Well, the town did reach agreement with our collective bargaining units. However, we did budget for the cost of the collective bargains in the first year of the budget, so the budget would be sufficient to fund those collective bargaining agreements. Initially, when we did speak with the advisory, that was the case. We hadn't settled.
Thank you. One other thing, if you do speak, unless I introduce you by name or welcome you by name, please state your name and your address when you come up to the mic, at least the first time that you speak. This requires a simple majority vote for indefinite postponement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It passes unanimously. Article V is our annual compensation schedule. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article V. It's printed in the town meeting warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Fitzgerald.
The Advisory Committee recommends approval of this article. The 1.5 cost of living increase in the comp schedule referenced in the article applies to town employees who are not covered by a union contract. The post increase is aligned with town increases that union employees are scheduled to receive this year. Parity and COLA between the union and non-union employees is consistent with how the town has approached compensation.
Questions, comments on Article V? Seeing none, requires simple majority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It passes. Okay. Article VI is the annual operating budget, the omnibus budget. Before Mr. Lutz makes a motion, a few ground rules on how we do this. This is our entire budget. It's a lot of money. I want to provide some guidance on how we may debate it. You're going to first hear the motion, then we're going to hear a recommendation from the advisory board, then we're going to hear a presentation from the town administrator, Norfolk schools, KP schools, and if they'd like to, if Tri-County is in the House tonight, if they would like to provide us with an update as well, they all get to make presentations first. Then, we are going to discuss the individual line items, and we'll get to what that is when we're done with the presentations. But essentially, I will be reading the general categories of government that correspond with categories in the budget handout that was outside. There will also be information on the screen. If there's a line item within the general budget categories that you want to discuss, debate, amend, whatever, you would say, "Hold" at that time. I'll explain this again. And then I'll hold that, and we can discuss whatever line item you want. Everything we don't hold is deemed approved, and we'll take one final motion at the end of the day for that. So those are the ground rules on how we're going forward with that. Motion for Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town fix the salary and compensation of the elected position of town clerk at $91,679.12 as provided for by the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, for the fiscal year commencing on July 1, 2024. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of $52,934,360 for a total general fund operating budget. And to meet said appropriation, transfer $40,000 from ambulance receipts, $195,000 from ARPA funds, and $605,532 from free cash, and raise the sum of $52,93828 from the FY '25 tax levy to defray the departmental and incidental expenses of the town not otherwise provided for in the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Lutz.
The article would fund the general operating budget for the town for the upcoming fiscal year, which begins on July 1. The proposed budget of $52... Excuse me. The proposed budget is for $52,934,360, which represents more than a 5% increase over the current fiscal year. Much of this is driven by fixed costs relative to health care and salary increases. There are other areas where we have that, and we'll hear more about that later. During our deliberations on the proposed budget, members of the advisory committee expressed our ongoing concern over the use of one-time or non-recurring revenues to achieve a balanced budget and the need to address the structural deficit that we are facing, with the expectation that a different approach will be needed in the future. The committee voted unanimously to support the budget with the expectation that our concerns will be addressed during the next budget cycle. I'd also like to point out, there is a budget document that a lot of people didn't pick up when they came in, and it is out front, and some of them have been handed around.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Mr. Casanova Davis, do you have a presentation with some slides?
Yes. Just for a quick introduction, Justin Casanova Davis, town administrator. Our finance director and myself, we will go through this presentation. This budget was compiled with the guidance of the Select Board, assistance of all these department heads that we have here in front, so I appreciate their collaboration. Based on feedback from last year, the town did provide further backup information for the budget, so we have provided those handouts. We've provided them on the website, and we've discussed this with the advisory committee as well. So we hope that this further transparency and this further information is helpful. Moving forward, we are going to collaborate, continue our implementation with ClearGov, and have a digital budget book that we posted online. We already have implemented our capital plan, which is online. And then I'll toss it to Todd first for a couple of slides, and then chime in after.
So in order to come in with a balanced budget, we have to provide information as far as the revenues are concerned for the town and what we expect on a going-forward basis for the fiscal year '25. So knowing that we can take the property taxes and increase them up to 2.5%, that revenue increase for the tax base is going to be $39,327. Our local receipts, which includes items such as building permits, excise taxes, meals tax, things of that sort, local departmental receipts, those are also increasing this year for the revenue portion. That amount is $4137,000. State aid, that's the amount of monies that we're going to be receiving from the state in order to cover Chapter 70 monies, as well as other additional state funds that we receive in. The balance of that amount, including the assessments, because we do have to actually pay some expenses that are associated with those monies, but the balance is going to be $4659,000. In order to come in with a balanced budget, we needed to utilize a few other funds. ARPA funds, we've identified $195,000. Last year, we utilized $944,000, so we're reducing that amount this year. Free cash, last year, we used $159,000 roughly to balance the budget. This year, we anticipate at least $605,000 in order to come in with the balanced budget that's being presented to you tonight. For the remainder, $40,000 is ambulance receipts, and that's just basically to cover the ambulance billing, which is typically the dollars that are raised in the ambulance billing, cover the cost for the software that's utilized and the services of the ambulance billing company. So that's kind of where we're getting those monies from. Total amount, not including the additional debt for the operating budget, it's going to be $48,963,000. And that's an increase of about $1.7 million, or about 3.65% overall. Next slide. I talked about state aid earlier on, being about $4,006,000. And as you can see here, how is that $4,006,000 comprised of? We have Chapter 70 school aid, charter school tuition, unrestricted government aid, used to be identified as lottery funds, additional aid coming from the state, exemptions related to veterans, and then the state-owned land assessment that we also receive. Those are all the revenues coming in. And then the assessments are the expenses that we have to reimburse back to the state. That amount is $718,532. Again, gets us the $4,659,112. The change overall for state, $125,000, an increase of about 2.78%. With respect to the local receipts, what we did is we went through and identified, based on the trends of historical receipts on the actual revenues that were for these particular line items, and made adjustments according to what the trends were so that we could come in with a fiscally responsible and balanced budget. We've increased motor vehicle excises, $25,000. And again, if you have the complete 12-page booklet of the budget, these line items are in there under the revenue pages. Penalties and interest on taxes, increase 15. $7,000 increase for pilot, transfer station revenues, again, $10,000. Small increase for fees of $1,000. Licenses and permits, this is the building permits and fees associated with that. That is an increase of $50,000. Reducing fines and forfeitures, because the trend was a little bit downward, $1,500. And then investment income, we're increasing that, $10,000. Meals tax, again, the trend of late has been a little bit lower, so we want to be mindful of that. That came down to $5,000. And then the last item is miscellaneous, which is prison mitigation funds. Those have... Previous year, we had a hit to us because we only received about $100,000 that we anticipated receiving almost $300,000. Trend last year was $200,000, so we've increased that to what we anticipate based on what the state is going to be providing to us. And again, the use of ARPA monies, $195,000. Free cash, $605,532. Total increase to our total revenues that are going to be used for the balancing of the budget, a little over $1 million. And the change in the local receipts equates to about a 5.4% increase.
And then so, summation of some of our revenue highlights. New growth in town is robust. Real estate receipts are on track this fiscal year. Building permits have continued to be strong again this year, and we're projecting that they will continue to remain strong. State aid is increasing at a modest 2.78%. For the town of Norfolk, we utilize the governor's proposed budget for local... Excuse me, state aid, which includes UGAR and Chapter 70. The town does not account for House and Senate budget proposals. Those figures have been generally a little higher for the town. So we generally, in the town, we account for those adjustments in the fall town meeting. As Todd mentioned, prison mitigation funds were projected an increase of $100,000. We did receive that extra amount of revenue this fiscal year. We're expecting that and potentially more the following fiscal year. What we do want to highlight, and we've done this as Select Board and the Advisory Committee, adjustments made in local receipts do have a ripple effect. We try to be conservative with any adjustments in these revenues as the more of these funds that are budgeted essentially reduces our free cash in the following years, and thus affects capital and budget transfers because that's how the town funds its capital expenditures. The changes we make in our local revenue have a big impact, and the local receipts have a big impact on our town. We're very careful when we adjust these funds. Todd and I have vigorous conversations. We look at previous five years of receipts to come up with what we think are our best-case proposals. But we have to be transparent and say, you know, the more we budget these local receipts, it does have an impact for future years. And generally, we've looked at, you know, increasing revenue for the town. So various departments have made proposals for fee increases, mindful of trying to be in line with comparable communities. The following slide is the general budget motion that we will eventually vote on. As Todd and Jay had mentioned, we did provide a more robust budgetary package that goes in-depth on these lines. But generally speaking, when we do vote, we vote on these categories. They have their various percentages increase. And as Todd had mentioned previously, the overall budget increase is 5.32%. And I'm sure we'll dive into that as we talk about it this evening. So highlighting some of the budget drivers for this budget this year. Education, all four districts is about 3.4%. So almost $900,000 of our increased revenue. We had a final year of our grant for the MECC expiring, so you will see a large increase. This will likely be the last large increase that we'll see, but that's $100,000 in new expenditures. Norfolk County Retirement, there's a 2.32% increase, which is about $70,000. Medical insurance was the highest rate possible, which is $257,000 for the budget. Public safety costs tend to be a big driver in town operational budgets, so that's $204,000. But a large driver is the excluded debt increase, which is $976,000, which largely accounted for the fire station.
As we go through this process, when we do the budget, we start early January. Memo goes out to all the department heads. They hate receiving this memo because I always tell them they can't spend anything. But basically, we go through, we say, "Okay, provide us with a budget that you anticipate for next year, knowing the cost considerations are going to increase for various items, whether it's materials, software, personnel, or what have you." There's a lot of contractual obligations throughout the different departments. They have to put in their requests. I always tell them, "If you don't request, you're not going to get." So they put in their requests, and then they don't get. So these are the don't gets. We've gone through all the different departments and basically analyzed and asked, you know... They come in with their initial requests. Justin and I will sit down with the department heads and we'll say, "Okay, great. However, go back and come in with something a little bit better." With those recommendations, these are the changes that were made from the initial get-go reductions. And again, being mindful that when they initially submit, they're all trying to be mindful of coming in at an acceptable budget level. And that includes everybody across the board, schools and all the different departments. This is a tried and true method. It's worked so far. But again, these are the items. I'm not going to get into them specifically. You can see them on the board. General government overall had a lot of different items because of a lot of different departments. General government overall had a lot of different items, because of a lot of different departments. Education, they reduced overall about $100,000. We had some adjustments on agricultural in Tri-County, just because of number of kids that are going to be going differed from what our initial projection was. And then public works, reductions there, human services, culture recreation, building liability, and so forth. So again, these are items that were reduced from the initial requests. Would we love to have them? Yes, but we're not going to be able to, because we've already provided a balanced budget, knowing these items aren't going to be fulfilled. So that's the town reductions. The next slide. Norfolk Public Schools, multiple conversations with them, budget of about 4%, which reflects an overall increase from their previous budget level of last year of $603,000. They're going to be utilizing 125,000 Special Education Stabilization Fund. Couple of years back, we created the stabilization fund, and we funded that with $250,000 that actually came from the budget of the return backs of the public schools. Now, we need to utilize those monies to help offset the budget impact on the school side. So $125,000 has been approved through the school committee and the select board to be utilized in the budget this year to reduce the amounts. The overall is about 3.2% increase. On this screen, this is identifying the total budget allocated to the Norfolk Elementary. And then also included, we've identified all those items that are in the general fund operating budget that are school-related. Total amount, including debt items as well, is about $18,847,232,000.
And so as we wrap up this presentation, we want to highlight some of our fiscal year 25 budget. So the ARPA appropriation is rescinding of the select board's decision to have funds for a grant writer position. So in order to balance the budget, we are removing that position, and that was multiple fiscal years that was accounted for, so that will help balance the budget for us. In fiscal year 24, in order to balance the budget on the town side, as well as, you know, the school side, there were several reductions in positions. We have largely kept those reductions in positions and expenses in this budget, and we've maintained that line, with additional reductions in town departmental budgets for fiscal year 25. As I mentioned before in Article 4, all collective bargaining agreements are accounted for in the fiscal year 25 budget. All our units are settled, and there's no budget adjustment necessary. We budgeted for it. The overall budget, the overall operating budget increases 3.6% and about $1.7 million. That's excluding, they're excluding debt. And particularly on the town budget side of growth, if you exclude education, fixed costs, debt, sort of the items that we have no control on, the overall town budget growth is 1.72%. As Todd said, we've, you know, we work with our department heads to try to come in with a responsible budget, working towards eliminating, reducing our reliance on one-time sources of funds. The budget climate continues to be difficult, with many of the requests by departments for expansion or restoration of positions that were moved in fiscal year 24 not being possible. You know, we've heard some, you know, requests for further, you know, services on our recreational fields. We had to remove a position in DPW for highway and grounds positions. So it continues to be difficult. Services have impacted, have been impacted, and many of these requests warrant consideration. But all overall, 3.6% growth may not be feasible in the future, particularly when we're talking about collective bargaining agreements, having overall 1.72% town growth is a pretty lean budget. And once again, Todd and I will highlight the usage of ARPA, free cash, and the special education stabilization funds to balance the budget are not ideal. Those are one-time sources of funds. When we say one-time, they're non-recurring funds. So that tends, that can lead to some long-term budgetary issues. And so for the year ahead, we will review the state-adopted budget and advocate for additional state aid. We've, you know, connected with our representatives, both in the Senate and in the House, to secure earmarks, to secure additional state aid, particularly in Chapter 70. We will monitor and review our expenditures and revenue to ensure we remain on track. At Fall Town Meeting, we expect to continue with our capital improvement project plan with targeted investments in the fall. And then in Fall Town Meeting, we will continue to do budget transfers to strengthen our financial position, particularly in stabilization and OPEB. The town was recently affirmed as a AA+ by S&amp;P by a recent bond rating with the S&amp;P Group. And this year, what will be different, we will start the budget process a little bit earlier this year. The town was able to secure a grant from the state to work with the Collins Center to develop a forecast. We've released that forecast, and we will utilize a forecast moving forward, so that process will start in December, and that will be done with, at the select board meeting and the advisory committee. And then finally, we will finalize integration with ClearGov modules, so we will have a budget book that we will post online, as well as have a transparency portal, so residents can see, you know, what their expenditures are going to within the town.
And on this last screen for this presentation, these are the historical budgets. The changes, the total dollar amounts for the various years, going from 2024 all the way back to 2002. Taking all that into consideration, the average budget increase is 4.38%. I will point out, 2021, we only had a 0.78% increase, thanks to COVID. We needed to be mindful during that time to make sure that we could come in with a very efficient budget, which we did. But we obviously had to give up some things that back then, and that's why the budget is at 5.32 versus the historical trend of 4.38. And also, going back to 2011 and 2010, again, very low budgets, negative budgets, which have impacted, and obviously have a compounding effect throughout the years. That's our presentation for the town. I believe the schools are up next.
Norfolk Schools, Dr. Alardi.
Is the microphone on? Can you hear me? All right, great. So thank you very much for giving us the opportunity tonight to share some information about the Norfolk Public Schools 25 fiscal budget request. Before we start, I just want to say a thank you to the community. We are so fortunate to be in a community that regularly shows such strong support for education. And that's not just from a fiscal perspective, but we are very lucky to have such a great partnership with the Norfolk Rec Department, who provides outstanding programs for students across the board. We're very lucky. We also have a great relationship with the police and fire, who regularly help us with safety planning and responding to various incidents that occur. Town departments, select board, and also, we have a great PTO, CPAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Board, and many, many members of both the parent community and school community who regularly volunteer with us. So thank you very much, and I will be brief tonight, because I know you have a long agenda. Oh, great, they are going to switch them for me, Rich, so you might not have to use the projector. So anyway, our budget process is heavily driven by our district vision and mission statement, which you can see up on the board. The district is committed to providing a strong educational experience that meets the needs of our diverse learners, that offers challenge and prepares them to be effective citizens in an ever-changing world. When we are faced with difficult budgets like we are this year, we really work hard to make decisions. When we have to make reductions, we try to preserve the instructional core and to make decisions that are going to have the least impact on the quality of education and programs that we are providing. I think it's important to contextualize this budget a little bit more broadly. Post-COVID, districts across the Commonwealth are facing many, many different budget challenges. Fiscal 25 was hard, not just for schools, it was hard for all town departments because of the revenue projections that you've heard already outlined. But unique to schools, we have seen some significant increases in the overall educational climate post-COVID. We've seen rising increases in the behavioral and mental health needs of our students that we need to provide and plan for. We also are looking at how we provide effective supports to help close academic gaps and promote student academic learning recovery. Post-COVID, we've also seen, not just in Massachusetts, but across the entire nation, increases in the number of students that are missing school and increases in chronic absenteeism. And there's also been dramatic changes to the hiring landscape. Where we used to post a position and have a broad range of applicants for every opening, we now struggle to fill many critical positions. It's very difficult to hire substitutes, food service workers, teachers in many critical licensure areas, and we have to keep our salaries and our rates of pay consistent with the market in order to be able to fill those. So it's a very different hiring landscape. Additionally, we also have seen dramatic increases in cost of many services. So for the Norfolk Public Schools, our transportation contract, which is a really large portion of our budget, is going to be going up 18% over the next three years. That is pretty competitive with what's happening across the state. We're also seeing tuitions for special education programs increasing statewide by 14% to 17%. Overall materials and expenses, those costs are going up and rising at pretty rapid rates. And then we are also encountering some significant changes at the state level to curriculum and to state learning standards that require us to adopt new programs and new materials and do that in an expedited fashion. I think another thing that's important for the public to understand is that Chapter 70 is the primary vehicle that the state uses to help towns and cities offset the cost of education. Chapter 70 is a formula-driven program. It offsets about 23% to 24% of the Norfolk Schools budget, and Chapter 70 aid has struggled to keep up with the rate of inflation. Additionally, there's another problem with Chapter 70, and Chapter 70, your Chapter 70 aid is calculated based on the student population you have enrolled in your district in October. Because we are in a position, we have rising enrollment, it does not account for the new students that enter to the district after that time. So there is a shortfall in Chapter 70. Additionally, Norfolk is identified as a minimum aid community, and that's based on the relative wealth of the town per state formula. So we are not expecting to see dramatic increases to the overall Chapter 70 aid that will benefit Norfolk. There were some recent increases approved, which I'll talk to at a later slide, but overall, we expect that Chapter 70 to be fairly stable. Additionally, we have seen some decreases to federal allocation grants that we regularly receive to offset the budget. We receive funding through Title I through Title II, and we have in the past received entitlement grant through Title IV. Those resources that we receive from the federal government have been used to support and offset the cost of professional development programming, also have supported the funding of a math specialist position. Your entitlement grant allocation amounts are determined by the number or percentage of students in the district that are determined to be, I thought you were coming to tell me I'm not loud enough, that were determined to be considered economically disadvantaged. Pre-COVID, that was based on local data that we submitted to the state, based on the number of students that applied for free and reduced lunch. It is now based on federal census data, because school meals are universally free and funded at the state level, and the federal census data underestimates the percentage of our students that are economically disadvantaged. Our local data shows that number is rising, and it's gone up from about 4.7% to over 7%. Federal census data is indicating it's declining. And so as a result, we anticipate next year, we will not be receiving any of those supplementary Title I, Title II, or Title IV allocation grants. So we are facing rising costs, difficulty with Chapter 70 in keeping up, as well as decreased federal funding. As I mentioned earlier, enrollment in Norfolk has been steadily growing. You can see through the chart above. The majority of our growth so far has happened at the lower elementary school. We are seeing larger kindergarten classes enter and roll up. Over the past 10 years, we've had an increase of 96 students at the age all of day. You can see our current enrollment or projected for the fall is 435 students. We had 339 back in 2014. Enrollment growth is starting to hit the Freeman, as those larger kindergartens are rolling up. And you can see, we're up by about 39 students in Freeman Kennedy. So this pattern is expected to continue, a slow and steady growth rate. Again, that's where the Chapter 70 aid doesn't account for that new growth and leaves us with a shortfall. This is just a sense of, the Department of Education identifies for every community in the Commonwealth a set of comparison districts. Ours is based primarily on the fact that we are a K6 district, and so these are other K6 communities or K8 communities that the state has identified as our benchmark communities. You can see, when you look at the per pupil expenditures, Norfolk is falling in the bottom of those comparison communities. This is an all-in total budget, all of the grants you receive, all of the local funds you receive, your Chapter 70 aid divided by the number of students that you have. Every district's required to file with the state a year-end report, and that is what this is calculated from. I do, I would say in Norfolk, and I'll speak to it again a little bit later, we really work hard to stretch those educational dollars to write competitive grants, to bring in additional revenue, and to find creative ways to cost share some services with the town, to try to stretch that as far as we can. So our Norfolk 2025 budget request is an increase of 3.17% over the last year's budget. It allows us to meet all of our contractual obligations, so that's the teacher's contract, transportation contract, other service contracts that we have. It does provide an increase in special education funding to meet the needs of the students that we have enrolled. It allows us to provide appropriate levels of mental health staffing to retain the mental health providers that we currently have within the school. It allows us to maintain our class sizes within the school policy limits. We are at the higher end of the school policy class size limits now, but we are within that across all grade levels. And it also allows us to fund partially the adoption of a new ELA program. So as I mentioned, this aid has set forth some requirements for English Language Arts instruction. Our current program is not aligned with the new standards and requirements. We've had a two-year study with our English Language Arts Committee. We've recommended adoption of the new program to be implemented in September. This budget accounts for 125,000 or approximately half of that cost. Just recently, we have been notified that the state did approve an increase in Chapter 70 aid. It went from $30 additional per student to 104. So there will be additional revenue coming into the town in the fall, and we are hopeful that we will be able to return some of that money to the schools to offset the balance of the ELA program adoption. As you've already heard, it was a difficult budget year. A level service budget for the Norfolk Schools, if we were to close our doors in June and reopen in September exactly the way we're currently staffed, it was an 8.9% overall increase. We recognize in this environment that that's not feasible for the town to fund, and so have had to make some strategic cuts in order to bring the budget down to a reasonable number that the town could afford. So the reductions that we've made, we are reducing 5.4 teaching positions. That is comprised of a technology integration teacher, who primarily works with our teachers around STEM engineering design and computer literacy. We will now have one person that's serving all grades, K to 6. We are also not filling a math specialist position. We have seen some slight growth in our math achievement scores. We are not where we were pre-COVID, but that is starting to recover, and we will not be refilling that position. That person retired in January, and we are not refilling it. We are reducing our library assistance, so our librarians will have to assume library management responsibilities, which will, to a degree, impact the instruction that they provide to our classes. We also are reducing some paraprofessional positions and point three other positions. We were able to reclassify costs from some of our custodial and food service positions into a revolving account. Because we have been getting state reimbursement for meals, we have a balance in that account, so we are going to be charging part of the custodial salary to that food service account. And then after the budget, we were notified with additional teacher retirement that will generate some savings. So total savings and salaries, about close to 300,000. And as Todd previewed for me, we are also using some one-time, non-recurring revenue. We have the Special Ed Stabilization Fund that we talked about earlier, that was established at town meeting a few years back. The goal of that was to have a reserve fund should we have unexpected increases in costs. We do next year, and we'll be using 125,000 of that fund to offset those increases. Additionally, we have a special education tuition account. We have worked very closely with our partner districts, Rentham and Plainville. When we have students with unique needs, we often place within those three communities rather than an out-of-district placement, allow students to progress to the middle school, regional middle school with peers. When we have students from other district placed with us, there is a tuition assessment. We have a total of 108,000 in that account, and we do not have any new students currently placed. We are recommending using the full balance of that account to offset the cost of special education programming and staffing. Just again, we work really closely with the town to try to make sure that we are thoughtful about cost savings efforts. to try to make sure that we are thoughtful about cost savings efforts. The slide's a little funky tonight, I apologize for that. But we do have a shared facilities director. We used to each have a facilities position. We've merged that, and we share a full-time facilities director with the town. We each pay a portion of that salary. We have a shared custodial position that we've now had for a few years. That does save us because that person works a staggered week schedule. It saves us on custodial overtime on the weekends. We have regionalized our school lunch program. So the school lunch program director and assistant director and staffing serves both Norfolk, Rentham, and Plainville. So we've regionalized that to save costs on the administration of that program. We also cost share professional development with King Philip, Rentham, Plainville schools. And we work really closely with our regional wellness director to pursue competitive grants. Next year, we have a mental health wellness grant that's going to offset some portion of counseling salary. And we have several other competitive grants that are in progress. And I apologize, if you have my slides, you can see them. I do my work in Google and the town does PowerPoint. So in conversion, you're missing the bottom of that. But we have several other, we're looking at a technology cybersecurity grant that we are pursuing in partnership with the town as well. I think that questions are saved till after all the presentations, am I correct, Jay?
Correct.
All right, great, so I will turn it over to Rich.
KP Schools.
Did you say this one? I didn't try it because he was turning it over to me.
All right, thanks, Dr. Allardy. My name's Rich Strollay. I'm the new King Philip Superintendent this year. Very happy to be here. I want to thank those of you I've had a chance to speak to who have welcomed me. And I look forward to speaking to more of you in the future. So I'll just quickly run through King Philip's budget. Just want to share our FY '25 budget proposal maintains a high level of service for all students and attains goals in an area of adding a new specialized program at our high school for students with significant social or emotional needs. Also wanted to let you know, thank you for those of you who filled out a survey. We had over 1,000 people fill it out. We're in the process of a new strategic planning committee. We hope to have that in play by the end of the summer or the fall, which will include new goals and initiatives to help increase innovative learning experiences for students and bring our vision of a graduate more to life and lead our students to develop the knowledge, skills, and competencies necessary to succeed in the workforce, college, career, and life. And in developing this budget, I want to let you know I did work closely with our district leadership team. I want to acknowledge Mr. Azar here, our school business administrator, Director of Finance and Operations, and also worked closely with our school committee. So this recommended budget does meet the needs of our students while also remaining fiscally responsible. KP will be re-receiving limited additional Chapter 70 monies primarily due to, we did have an increase of 37 students this year after enrollment had gone down over the past few years. This shows our enrollment for Norfolk, Plainville, and Rentham this year. And it breaks it down by percentage and number of students. And that's what they use to calculate Chapter 70 state funding for next year. Here's just another chart that shows Rentham, Norfolk, and then Plainville. You can see Norfolk is just second to Rentham in total enrollment, and this is by percentage. So if you look on the top right, from last year to this year, Norfolk's enrollment went up slightly, Plainville almost the full percent, and Rentham down by a little bit more than a percent in student enrollment. I'm going to skip over this one to keep things moving, this is state aid. I did want to share, I'm not putting forth a needs-based budget, but I did meet with principals, administrators. If we were to put forward a needs-based budget, we would want to add 9.5 positions and add some more funding for some other things. But if we did put forth a needs-based budget, that would be a 13% increase from FY '24 to FY '25. So we won't be putting it forward, but we still did go through that exercise. As Todd said, these are the don't gets, I believe. If we were to do a level service budget, we would still have a 10.2% increase from FY '24 to FY '25. Again, as Dr. Allardy alluded to, that's not feasible. So when compared from FY '24 to FY '25, what we're putting forward tonight is a 4.3% increase, and I'll go over that now. Our large increases were primarily due to contractual increases, health insurance cost increases, plus special education out-of-district tuition increases, charter school increases, and school choice increases. So unfortunately, what we're presenting tonight, we do have to make reductions. 19.5 positions. You can see all of the reductions, total 2.4 million at the bottom. We are doing this strategically. And although we have to make reductions, our goal is to minimize any impact on students. We're still going to offer our high-quality educational programs, courses, extracurricular activities. For example, we're not cutting extracurriculars, we're not raising user fees, we're not cutting AP classes at the high school or anything like that. But although we don't want to propose layoffs, it is necessary due to budget constraints, and some positions will no longer be funded. Final decisions about these positions are strategic to have the least detrimental impact on student learning and programming. Some positions will be reduced through attrition. For example, some people might retire and we might not fill those positions. Others will be via layoffs. Procedures outlined in contractual agreements will be followed. As a result, there'll be some vacancies or positions filled based on mitigating factors such as seniority educator licensure. And at this time, any proposed positions that may be reduced from this year to next year, to share that wouldn't be fair to staff, so I won't be going in details. Just know that conversations with impacted employees are beginning to happen now and will continue to happen through June. And if possible, we will recall some staff over the summer, some teachers first and foremost. It's also important to note, we went through line by line, think over 1,000 lines to cut expenses with any lines that we could. This shows overall, the increase in the bottom right for us operating budget from FY '24 to FY '25 is 4.33%. One thing I skipped over, I did want to highlight, with existing staff, we are adding a program at our high school without adding positions. So we're going to have a special education teacher, a adjustment counselor, and a teacher assistant. And we're creating a new program at our high school, which is a positive, which will offer therapeutic programming for some students we consider to be at the highest level of need due to social-emotional dysregulation, anxiety, depression, and sometimes they have hospitalizations. This program will provide academic and counseling support in a single space every day with clinical care coordination. And we expect this new program, and in future years, we'd like to develop more programs to keep students in district who might otherwise require an out-of-district placement. It's also the right thing to do for kids, and it meets our legal and moral obligation to educate students in the least restrictive setting. This is just another slide that breaks down costs and how from FY '24 to FY '25, revenue, state aid, E and D. We are using $400,000 from E and D to fund the FY '25 budget, as has been done in years past. So we expect that E and D account to go from about $1.3 million to $900,000, down to $900,000. It's important to note, as Dr. Allardy alluded to too as well, state aid has dropped. For us, it's dropped from about 26% to about 22% as part of our budget from FY '18, and that's largely absorbed by town assessments. These are by the three towns. The increase to Norfolk, 3.42% here tonight. Plainville you'll see has an almost 11% increase. And Rentham is the same, or very slightly went down as their enrollment went down. This just takes it over the past eight years. So you'll see the average, our operating budget increase, 4.33% that we're, tonight. You'll see Rentham, Plainville, and Norfolk over the past eight years or so. FY '18 is highlighted, that was a large increase year where the budget was in rough shape. And we're hoping to, by making reductions, we're hoping to stabilize the budget and to continue to build up services next year moving forward. But you can see, on average, Norfolk, 4.06% increase over the past six to eight years. Plainville, 4.65, and Rentham, 3.62. So that's it, I want to thank you for your attention. I'm always available for questions if you want to chat or meet. And I will turn it over to the moderator, thank you.
So, a presentation by Tri-County?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Marshnick, Fredericson Road, Norfolk. I am the school committee rep to Tri-County, the Regional Vocational School. I don't know if you all know about it. The last time I came before you, I was, I guess, begging for money and asking you to vote in favor of a new school building. Norfolk supported us overwhelmingly. The building project is moving forward. I want to thank you all, first off. It's a well-needed school that's going to help a lot of kids and a lot of people in the trades. The Tri-County budget for fiscal 2025 totals $24,813,733, which represents an increase of, that'll help, 5.98% or $1.399 million over the fiscal year 2024. The school district receives approximately $5,882,000, or 24% of its budgetary funding resources from Chapter 78. The projected increase in Tri-County is based on minimum per student aid. Of the 316 school districts in Massachusetts, 212 school districts received the minimum per student aid voted by the legislature. Lack of significant additional incremental state funding continues to allocate the burden of funding of our budget on the member communities, you guys, in fiscal 2025. Contractual salaries obligations for staff increase overall in wage spending by $510,000. In addition to contractual salary increase for staff, the district budget is challenged by higher rates of inflation and the cost of transportation, materials, supplies, and utilities. The district borrowed $20 million to provide cash flow for the school building project. The bond anticipation note is due in fiscal 2025 at a net interest cost of 3.269% or $721,000. The town in Norfolk had an increase of one student in the foundation enrollment of Tri-County calculating the 2025 budget and a total student count of 42. The state determined required minimum contribution based on the increase of one student is $32,305, or 62% of the overall Norfolk assessment increase of $52,000. Norfolk's total assessment for fiscal year 2025 is $764,364. Of the $1.399 million of our budget, $721,000 is going to the interest-only payment on the bond for the new building. So in reality, our school budget is only 2.9% increase. We've worked very hard to keep it flat. Keep in mind that this school requires more things than a traditional school. We have all the required supplies, materials to educate the children in the trades. It's very expensive. I asked our state legislator, hi Marcus, Chapter 70 funding, we need to increase it. $30 per student increase is not enough. It's on all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for those presentations. So, want to draw your attention to a couple of things. First, the slide on the, can we go to slide six?
Six.
Right there. This is the line items I'm going to be reading. However, in the budget document that was available to folks out on the table, there's summaries of each one of these particular categories. Particularly, starting at page seven, there are a number of sub-line items. We vote on the bottom line for each of the categories, but we can discuss as a group any of those line items within each of those categories that you like. I won't be reading them out, I'm only reading out these numbers. If a line item that you want to discuss is in one of those categories, then say "hold" when I read out these categories and we can discuss what you want to discuss. So that's how we're going to proceed at this point. So, without further ado, general. Mr. Rosenberg?
David Rosenberg, 123 North Street. If one wants to discuss the budget processing in general rather than individual line items, how or when can that discussion take place?
The budget process?
The process by which this budget was derived, yes.
Well, you're going to have to pick what line item you want to hold. I would suggest if you want process, generally you would probably want to hold general government and talk about that at the time. We had a lot of discussion on process. I don't want to get too deep into it. We're here to discuss the individual line items, what you like, what you don't like about them. The sausage took place at the meetings of this group in front of me. Over there, the school departments at their meetings. So we're not going to get too deep in it, but I will indulge you and allow a few questions if you decide to hold that category.
Thank you.
Okay. General government, $3,763,042.
Hold.
There's a hold. Public safety, $6,747,950.
Hold.
Hold on public safety. Education, $27,7817. DPW, 2 million, did we have a hold on education? Yes or no? No? DPW, $2,543,812. Human services, $258,519. Culture and recreation, $896,375. Benefits and insurance, $7,073,704. Debt service, $608,996. Subtotal of the budget, $48,963,216. Exempt debt, which is debt that is outside the levy, $3,971,144, for a total budget of $52,934,360. Okay, we've got three holds. First would be general government. Mr. Rosenberg, was that you?
Yes, thank you, and this is my process question. When people are originally, department heads are originally asked to propose a budget, if they know that the next step is going to be that they're going to be asked to reduce that budget, it would seem that they would be inclined to pad where they could so that they'll have room for the reductions that they know they'll be asked for. How does the process deal with potential padding in the original proposals?
So I'm not going to get into the motivations of any particular department here because I'm not going to accept the notion that anyone padded anything. So, and I don't think we can impute that on any other particular departments. There's a lot of little sub-budgets here. So if you want to know the process by which Todd, and he already explained it, went through along with Justin and had conversations, or how the advisory board brought people in to talk about their budgets, I'll let them briefly describe that. But I'm not going to start with a premise that isn't before us.
Mr. Moderator, I hope that you understand I'm not imputing anything and I'm not focusing on any particular department. I'm just concerned about how the process protects against the inclination to protect a budget, which all departments are likely to want to protect their budgets.
I'm going to speak for them, and then they can speak for themselves, the various heads of departments. I think you heard from Mr. Linmark, from Mr. Casanova-Davis. If you've been to an advisory board meeting, you hear from them. If you went to the budget hearings for any of the schools, they work really hard, they scrutinize things, then they get re-scrutinized here at this table. If Mr. Casanova-Davis or Mr. Linmark have anything to add, or Mr. Lutz or Dr. Allardy have anything to add. These are all professionals, and they know what numbers look like and what they should be, is what I would suggest. But if I don't want to, if any of them want to step up and speak for themselves, they're welcome to. for themselves, they're welcome to do it.
Mr. Moderator, I would just quickly say that as part of our budget process, you know, I give a budget memo to the department heads. In our budget memo this year, we asked them to come 3% or lower. Uh, if you look at COLAS and STEP is generally 4%. Um, generally speaking, um, our department heads, uh, the, the other message that Todd and I said to departments, let's look where we can realize some savings. They are professionals, as Jay said. Uh, these budgets are very tight. As I mentioned in our slide, the overall town growth, when you're excluding things that we don't have control on, but for our other departments is 1.7%. Um, I think we did a good job with our, our, our budget. I don't see any padding. Uh, we were very conservative initially with our budget memo, and then we tightened our belts even further after talking with the board, after reviews with our department heads. Um, that's our process and, um, that's all I have to add to that.
Thank you. Um, anyone else on general government or any of the line items within general government? Seeing none, let's move ahead. Uh, there was a hold on public safety. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Thomas, Clayne, 25 Main Street. Um, question about the police vehicles is, um, what is going to hap, what has been going on since September and October? I know that N4 is a, an 18 Ford Explorer, N4, that's the older N11, that's a 2024 Explorer, and N8, the old N12, that's a, uh, 2021 Ford Explorer, and the N14 that crashed, that, and it was totaled from Joseph and his psychic Mitchell. So, what is the holdup for the new police vehicles, for the police SUVs, the Chevrolet Tahos like Medway and Medfield, the other, the other towns do?
So, I don't know who wants to help. Chief, can you come down?
Tim Heinz, Police Chief. Thomas, great question.
Great to meet you again.
Yes, good to see you again.
Yeah.
We did, uh, receive those vehicles and implemented them about a month or so ago. Uh, they're up in the fleet and running. As you know, it's a, usually a fall, uh, capital item.
Yeah.
So, those vehicles are in service. They're all up and running now. It did take us some time to get those because of shortages and supply issues, but, uh, rest assured they are up and running and being used.
Yeah. And my follow-up is, what are they going to replace the old, I mean, the old police vehicles? Are they going to be going to the trans, I mean, the, the, uh, the town hall to replace the, the tourists, as Blair said, or are they going to go to the DPW to be recycled?
Uh, when those vehicles come in and, uh, we take the lights, the radios, everything that, uh, the police use for those vehicles, uh, we will assess their condition, take a look at the vehicles that are currently in the fleet and, uh, and make the best decisions. Some of them rot out and go immediately to auction. Uh, sometimes if, uh, we're able to, uh, put those in service and take something that's in worse shape out of service, then, uh, then we make those decisions when the time comes.
Could you just introduce yourself so everyone knows?
Blair Crane, Director of Public Works. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thomas, anything further on public safety?
Yeah, um, for Chief Kenny, um, we talked about this for the FY21 meeting, what is going to happen with the ladder truck. It's really, really old. It's a 96. It's not going to last a long time. And what's going to happen to the two ambulances? A2 is an 18 Ford F550 Horton, four by four ambulance, and A1 is a 16 Ford F550 Horton, four by four ambulance. The last one is about the, um, is the black fire engine, the 2005 E1 Typhoon Pumper, emergency one because it turned 19 in April. There's going to be replacements for that.
So, Chief, uh, Thomas teed it up for you. Tell us you need a new ladder truck.
All right. Um, so for our fleet, um, we are, uh, we have written a regional grant for a new ladder truck, which we are partnering with the town of Rantham. Um, again, that objective is in line with many of the things you've heard tonight. We're trying to do that to, uh, reduce the burden on the taxpayers, uh, for both towns, uh, by splitting that resource. Um, so hopefully, we will get that grant. If any, uh, elected officials in here have the power to kind of push that through at FEMA, you know, and get that done, we'd greatly appreciate it. Uh, so we're, we're working on that. We're actively working on that. Um, our engine one, um, under normal circumstances and normal, uh, fiscal constraints, we would be looking to replace that in the coming fiscal year in the fall, uh, because it will turn 20. Um, but, uh, you know, we are going to try to stretch life out of that as long as we possibly can because, as many of you are aware, uh, supply chain and cost of fire apparatus and just cars in general, but in fire apparatus, it's gone up almost a, entirely 100%. The price has almost doubled. Uh, so, you know, what used to be a, you know, still a very substantial ask of 600,000 or 700,000 is now a million. So, uh, you know, I have started planning and looking at ways to help the town, uh, hopefully, you know, relieve or alleviate some of that burden, but at some point, you know, it is going to have to be replaced and the costs are what they are. I don't have any control over them. Um, so, uh, but we are in the planning phase of that. Uh, good news is, though, we have a new engine that just arrived. Uh, we have a new tanker that just arrived. So, thank you to the taxpayers and, um, thank you for your support because we, we needed them. And you'll see those riding around town probably, you know, we'll probably start using them. We got to train and, and outfit them and everything. So it'll probably be the middle of June, but you should see those running around.
Yeah. And my last follow-up is what the ambulance is going to be placed by Dodge, no, no, uh, Ram ambulances by Millison Sharon has, or a Chevy ambulance which Blackstone, another town has?
So, that's the other thing that, uh, I think's, uh, possibly, we, we are, um, we both, both fire ambulances are a little bit tired. They both have over 100,000 miles on them. Um, our DPW, uh, superintendent and mechanics do a phenomenal job, so they stay in service. So, uh, they are not, you know, they're tired, but we are looking to, um, order a new ambulance. Uh, as with many other things, supply chain is, has very negatively impacted, uh, emergency service vehicle production, especially when you get into larger vehicles or vehicles like ambulances and fire apparatus. Uh, they are now taking almost four years from the day of order. So, again, a part of my planning is, we have to be on top of that or ahead of that because if I order an ambulance today, I'm not going to get it for probably three to four years. So, we fortunately have a, um, agreement in writing with a manufacturer where we're going to get a stock unit, which hopefully can be delivered next May, instead of us having to wait four years. So, um, again, those, those kind of challenges, we're, we're trying to navigate. Uh, I keep my eyes and ears open and looking all the time. So, uh, we're on top of it and we'll have a new ambulance coming in. And one of the things that we're going to try to do to help, um, you know, lengthen the life of our ambulances is continue to rotate them as we do. Uh, and we're going to look to keep three in rotation, um, you know, with this new one coming as opposed to getting rid of, uh, one of the others.
The old special hazards.
Old special hazards is, uh, we are working together with DPW to make that a vehicle for, uh, ba, overall town support for police, fire, and DPW. Um, in the instances where we have to call DPW after hours for trees down across the road, those kind of things. Um, we are looking to make that a response vehicle to allow that to be a quicker and more efficient process.
And with the new, last question, would the new ladder truck be black?
Yes. Uh, we are, we dare to be different in Norfolk and do things, uh, I like to say better and in a more efficient way. So, our new apparatus is black because there was overwhelming kind of public support for us to dare to be different, and we're going to just keep doing it. So, there are two beautiful new black fire trucks.
As Mr. Height would say, you just have to paint the fire engine black. We have a black one now. And Milford has yellow ones and Norfolk has green. Thank you.
Thomas, I don't know, is that your hold on DPW, on DPW as well? Unless there's other questions on public safety?
Oh, come on. I'm going to do this to you, Barry Blair. Okay, my question, this is not, it's only two questions. Uh, are they going to fix Boardman Street? They, we talked about that in the town, the, two years ago, from Mean to House Number 36, 23 Boardman, I mean, 25 Boardman, that never happened. And then North Street is in rough shape from 93 Northwest, only because all the way up to Marshall. That's been rough, has bumps and holes in the road. Is there going to be replacing for that?
Good evening. Barry Lourie, Airways Director, Norfolk DPW. Uh, in keeping in line with fiscal responsibility, we've kind of slimmed back our paving program for this year. Uh, we're looking at Route 115 from the Millis Town Line, the Boardman Street, Medway Street, Lauren Street, and we'll be paving as part, uh, Stanhope and Village Green as part of the water main project. Uh, we are allocated Chapter 90 funding every year. That's about $500,000. We are putting some of that in reserve and anticipating that budgets might be slimmer for next year. So, that's our paving program for this year.
Thank you, Barry.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Thomas. Anything else on DPW? Seeing none. Seeing no further holds, we are ready for a vote on the budget as presented, as shown up on the screen. It requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? A majority passes by a clear majority. Article seven, Water Department Enterprise Fund. Mr. Garrity?
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the Public Works Water Division Enterprise Fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2024 in the amount of $2,135,902, as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Garrity?
This article provides funding for the town's water division for fiscal 25. Uh, we vote the water division budget separately from Main Town budget as it's paid for out of an enterprise fund, which receives revenues from users of the system. The advisory committee voted unanimously to support this article.
Seeing no one rising to speak on this, requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes. Article eight, the wastewater enterprise fund. Mr. Garrity?
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the Public Works Wastewater Division Enterprise Fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2024 in the amount of $211,231, as printed in the warrant.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Garrity?
Um, this article provides funding for the wastewater budget of the, uh, DPW. It is also an enterprise fund, receiving revenues from users. Uh, due to revenue shortfalls experienced by the system, the budget is balanced with the use of retained revenues. The advisory committee voted six in favor with one abstention to support the article.
Seeing no one rising to discuss, this requires a simple majority vote as well. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes. Article nine, capital non-borrowing. Ms. Seer?
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article nine.
Been moved and seconded to indefinitely postpone. Explanation?
This article would authorize capital purchases during the upcoming fiscal year from operating funds. Currently, the town is proposing no capital purchases, though there may be some proposals to be considered at a later town meeting. Therefore, the advisory committee recommends to indefinitely postpone Article nine.
Been moved and seconded to indefinitely postpone. Requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 10, capital with borrowing. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town borrow the sum of $465,000 to pay the cost of purchasing and equipping an ambulance, as displayed on the screen, including the payment of all expenses incidental and related there too, and further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow such sum pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. The borrowing authorized by this vote will constitute a general obligation of the town, but it's the town's intention to repay this borrowing in the first instance from ambulance receipts.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Uh, this article seeks to appropriate the $465,000 for the cost of replacement ambulances. You've previously heard, uh, ambulances have high mileage on them. Uh, this is a result of the closure of Nowood Hospital. They're required to travel much further on a daily basis to the next closest emergency departments. This has caused the fire department to shorten their expected lifespans from five years of frontline service and five years of reserve service to four years of each service. Uh, and with the delays and lead times in getting these vehicles built, it's prudent to start this purchase process as soon as possible to maintain the two vehicles in service.
Seeing no one rising for discussion on the borrowing for a new ambulance. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? I, I declare a two-thirds vote with only minimal opposition. Article 11 is our annual naming of revolving fund limits. Ms. Seer?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 11 as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Seer?
This article authorizes spending limits for the town revolving funds, which are unchanged from last year's fund limits, with the exception for 2152 passports. The passports revolving fund increased from 5,000 to 7,500 due to the increased volume in the library processing passport applications. The advisory committee voted to support these fund limits.
Is an annual requirement of the state that we set a limit. These is not taxation. These are user fees that come in and then get expended through these funds. Seeing no one rising to discuss, requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 12, Chapter 90, roadway funds. Mr. Garrity?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Garrity?
This routine article authorizes the select board to use Chapter 90 funds received from the state for the maintenance, improvement, and construction of town roads.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Seeing no further comments or questions on Article 12 requires a simple majority. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 13, we don't take a motion. We give, um, the opportunity for committees and boards to let us know that they want to make a, um, brief presentation. I believe we have three. Um, I think there's an update from the Fire Station Building Committee. Is that, is that accurate?
Kevin Champagne, Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee, uh, 2 Seneca Street. So, uh, I am here. I'll keep it very brief. I know it's going to be a long night. Um, we are in, uh, really good, a really good spot with the project. Um, we, I'll kind of break it down a little bit, but essentially, uh, the contractor's been great to work with, uh, Vertex, the OPM, architect Doran Whittier, and everyone on the committee. This has really been working very hard to make this a successful project. Uh, the project's about 75% complete, and we've only spent, um, approximately 15 to 20% of our contingency money. Um, so if you recall, back, seems like a long time ago now, the special town meeting, we appropriated about one and a half million dollars in contingency money. We've only spent about 20% of that. We anticipate, uh, returning a significant amount of that money to the town when the project is complete. Um, the, uh, building is well underway. Actually, it should be complete by the end of next month, uh, at which time the fire department will move into the new building. And then, uh, shortly thereafter, the existing building will be demolished and the site work will be completed. Um, by the time I present here, hopefully at the next town meeting in November, it will be to tell you that the project is complete and, and we're done. Um, as I mentioned, that everyone's been working, uh, together really well to make it a successful project. Uh, we continue to meet as a committee every second, uh, Wednesday of the month, so please feel free to, to join in. Um, during each meeting, we go through, uh, what we call the OPM report, where we break down any change any change orders, any updates on the project, kind of project status. We'll go through project photos, which Andy Bakianowski is nice enough to also provide us with. We post to the town website if you're looking for any updates there. So, hope to see you at a meeting. And like I said, by, by next meeting, hopefully, we're talking about the completion of a successful project. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kevin. Next, the School Building Committee. We have an update from them.
Do we have?
Think we have some slides for that?
Just a few, I promise. Do I move them, or will they just move me along?
If you want to just...
Yeah, sure. Okay. I'm Midora Champagne. I'm a member of the school committee and was appointed as a member of the School Building Committee earlier this year. I also am a Champagne that resides at Two Seneca Street, so please bear with us in all of our fun projects. So, the Norfolk Public Schools have been studying growth in our enrollment since 2017. The reason for that should be relatively clear. If you look at this chart, which tracks enrollment in Norfolk in or around the same timeframe, beginning around 2014, which is shortly after Freeman Kennedy opened its doors. We can go to the next slide. So again, this is redundant to what Dr. Alardi spoke about as well, but we've seen some significant net gains in student population at both of our buildings. As a result of that, in 2018, after a preliminary space study was convened to try and assess what the best remedy for the issues we were experiencing might be, it was determined that exploring an addition to the existing Freeman Kennedy building would be a logical next step. The building is relatively new. Other options that were discussed at that point were possibly a third site for an early education center, or possibly a modular solution if it was determined that the issues we were seeing with enrollment might be more temporary in nature. So, subsequent to that, you can go to the next slide. They don't just have to look at the numbers. Subsequent to that, a few rounds of enrollment and demographic studies were done utilizing the services of NESDEC, which is a regional organization that studies patterns in enrollment and demographics in school-aged children. Both of those studies confirmed what we were seeing organically in the schools, which is that we have a growing student enrollment, and it was predicted that that would continue into the foreseeable future at a, you know, slow but steady rate. So, throughout the course of 2018 and 2019, we undertook, after having a warrant article approved at town meeting in the fall of 2018, a high-level space study to assess what might be possible with respect to an addition at the Freeman Kennedy School. The results of that were presented to the select board in 2019, and the general consensus was that an exploration of a possible addition would need to happen so that we could assess what, what might actually be involved. Subsequent to 2019, as you may all recall, we had a global pandemic, and some things were a little bit delayed as far as moving forward with the process. We did submit three grants to MSBA during that timeframe to see if we could get some partial, at least partial grant funding for a potential expansion at the schools. We were unsuccessful in those attempts. During the pandemic and during the years 2017, you know, through 2020, we continued to see issues, particularly at the HL of Day School with respect to spacing. There is no more space at the HL of Day School. We are rapidly running out of space at the Freeman School as well, but during that timeframe, we saw, for example, the music room being converted into instructional space. We saw essentially all possible excess administrative, administrative space being converted into instructional space. Server rooms have been converted to utilize for instructional one-on-one breakout space. It is not, it is not an ideal situation with respect to spacing. In addition, during the pandemic years, social distancing really impacted that building in particular more heavily. We did have one year where kindergarten, which is traditionally offered in a full-day format, could only be offered in a half-day format, just because the spacing that was required would not allow us to work within the footprint that we had. So, moving forward in, I want to make sure I get my dates correct. At the 2022 Springtown meeting, funds were appropriated to undertake a full feasibility study of expanding Freeman Kennedy. That is the result of that feasibility study up there. If you would like to see the full study, it's on the school's website. It was determined that approximately 36,000 square feet would be needed to address the needs of the school district, both at the HL of Day and at Freeman, for our current situation and moving forward into the future. Based upon the size of the recommended project, the anticipated cost of the recommended project, and just the scope of what is involved, particularly in light of the fact that the town is undertaking multiple capital projects kind of simultaneously at this point, at this past fall's town meeting, we requested through a warrant article that the town establish a full school building committee, not made up of more than just school committee representatives. It's a town issue, so we felt that it would be best if we moved forward with a committee that was more diverse in its perspectives and experiences within town. And we also recommended that that committee undertake another round of demographic studies to track enrollment, and potentially, well, not potentially, and undertake feasibility studies of alternative options that might prove to be appropriate long-term solutions that might potentially be more cost-effective. So, that said, I will turn the rest of the presentation over to Grace Lockhead, who is the Chair of the School Building Committee.
Thank you. I'm Grace Lockhead, 166 Farrington, and I am a member of the school committee. I am also the Chair of the Building Committee. So, as Midora just mentioned, as part of the warrant last fall, we established a building committee, which is separate from the school committee. It is comprised of three resident volunteers, which were approved by the select board. We have Mike Lucarello, Mike Ryan, and Jason Whalen as our fearless volunteers. Midora and myself serve on the committee, Dr. Alardi, and Justin Casanova-Davis as well. So, as a committee, our first action was to select a new demographer. As Midora mentioned, some of the data was a little bit older, and we wanted to make sure we could either confirm or refute the study that was done by NESDEC. As a committee, we selected the demographic analytic advisors, or DAA, who conducted a very thorough analysis. If you have not seen the presentation by DAA, they presented twice, once at the select board meeting and once at the building committee meeting a couple meetings ago, and I believe we're going to have them again at some point in the future. So I'd urge anybody who's interested to look at that. We can go to the next slide. So, DAA determined that enrollment is projected to increase about 250 students between 2024 and 2034. So, anybody who has eagle eyes, which I know people in this room definitely do, this number doesn't exactly match the numbers that were on Midora and Ingrid's slide from earlier. That's because what Midora and Ingrid were showing was actual enrollment. What this is, is the potential enrollment based on school-aged children projected in these years. Obviously, some children opt to go to charter schools or be homeschooled, private schooled, et cetera. So, the building committee is currently working with AI3 to assess modular options. We can go to the next slide. These are the three options we are currently looking at. We are looking at a two-story modular that's located in the back of the building. It's more or less right where the brick and mortar would be, but it, can't really see it there. It won't be touching the current building. Then another two-story modular that's located a little bit further back on the access road, and then a single-story modular that is located on the field adjacent to Freeman Kennedy, kind of between the parking lot and the playground there. We are looking at two different price points for each of these. So, basically, it's a difference of the materials that we'll be using, the longevity of how long it can be last, last for. These are temporary, typically temporary solutions, so we wanted to make sure that we got as many prices as we could there. All right, next slide. Next steps. So obviously, we're going to be getting the cost estimates for modular options. We are still going back and forth with AI3 to figure out what makes the most sense for these spaces, so that should be coming in the future. We're going to get a new estimate on the brick and mortar solution, given that that has been dated a little bit at this point. We will be evaluating other viable options, if there are other viable options that should be further explored by the committee. We also have a website, which will be coming in the coming weeks. It's not quite up yet, but it will be coming. We are going to have a couple of community forums. I know that we already have some in talks at different locations throughout the community. We will provide progress at the fall town meeting. And then I would like to put in a plug. Our next meeting is actually Monday at seven o'clock at Freeman, and if you're interested in hearing more, or you have questions specifically, please come. We would love more community involvement than less.
Thank you. And do we have a brief presentation from Master Plan Committee?
Thank you. Chad Peck, Ten Rites From Road. I'm the Chairman of the Planning Board. So, the master plan, we began that process in January of 2023. Over that time, the process has included community forums, community surveys, pop-up events, focus groups, interviews, and countless conversations with all residents of Norfolk, or many residents of Norfolk. We've had 1,100 individuals provide feedback, so that's, so thank you. There's still time to provide more feedback if you'd like. I want to give a special thanks to our Master Plan Steering Committee. These are members who volunteered time to help guide us through this process. The draft of that master plan document brings together the reoccurring themes from those conversations that we had with our residents, and a vision of the town for the next 10 years. That vision was grounded in a review of the past efforts, the, an informed analysis of our existing data and trends. The vision is detailed through a supporting set of goals and strategies organized by topic of that master plan. Each of these topics are a chapter in that master plan, and they include the vision, the economic development, land use, housing, transportation, open space and recreation, historical and cultural resources, community facilities and services, and community health. More implementation details are added in an implementation action plan. So we're creating this master plan. We're putting that all together, and then we're also going to create an action plan. And the action plan are strategies in four priority areas, including strengthening our town center, expanding mobility and recreational opportunities, growing the local economy, and improving resilience and adaptation. The draft master plan document is now available for you all to review. So like I said, there is still time to comment on it. We do have a draft master plan ready for, for you to review. Hopefully, everybody did pick up a handout out there. There is a handout that looks similar to this. So on this handout is a QR code. It also has the website of where you can access the draft master plan and provide additional comments. So the comment survey period will be open through June 20th, so you do have time, well over a month. We do have a, we are going to have a community forum on June 5th at town center, at the, not, yeah, at the town center when we do the farmer's market. So we'd like to see as many people there as well, but if you can't make it, there is the handout where you can provide comments online. So I want to thank you for supporting us on this project. It's, it's going to provide the vision for the next 10 years of this town. And we look forward to hearing from all of you as we finalize this plan over the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Okay, so again, we're taking out of order now. We're going to consider the MBTA zoning amendment, and Mr. Craig is going to be making the main motion.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 25 as printed in the warrant.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Craig.
The purpose of this article is to create a district in Norfolk that would comply with the MBTA Community Zoning Act. This law is an initiative to address the housing crisis in the state by promoting transit-oriented development. The law mandates that the 177 communities served by the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority establish at least one zoning district where multifamily housing is permitted by right. Failure to comply with these zoning requirements can result in adverse effects, such as losing eligibility for certain state funding programs, which include the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Projects Fund, and the MassWorks Infrastructure Program. The proposal before town meeting creates such a district in the downtown B1 district, as well as a secondary district in the Pondville area.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. We have a presentation from the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello, everybody. My name is Gary Sullivan. I sit on the Planning Board. I live at Sixberry Lane. I cannot be as captivating as a line item budget conversation, but I will try to make this as interesting and as short and on-point as possible. We're discussing Article 25, which is a proposal that puts our town in alignment with the Massachusetts MBTA Community Zoning Law. On the screen in front of you is the start of a presentation that the Planning Board has given numerous times in the last couple of weeks. We've also put this up on the Planning Board website for your review. I'm going to highlight just essential aspects of this presentation. We're not going to go through the whole thing, but I want to demonstrate how the Planning Board has strategically tailored this presentation, or sorry, the proposal, to both comply with state requirements and honor the unique character of Norfolk that we all love. Can we jump to Slide four, which is the what is it slide, the next one after this? Perfect. Thank you. So in 2021, Massachusetts amended its zoning laws to encourage more affordable multifamily housing near public transit hubs. This initiative impacts Norfolk and 176 other communities by mandating the creation of zoning districts where such housing can be built by right, without needing any special permits. So the state's aim here is to foster diverse transit-centric communities. Can we go to the next slide? Perfect. Thank you. The requirement is we need a district to be designated to allow for multifamily housing development at a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre without age restrictions located close to an MBTA station. Currently, Norfolk does not have an existing zone that satisfies these requirements. B1 comes close, and we did work on these back in 2021. If you remember, I was up here talking to you about it a couple of years ago, but it's not quite there. Due to multifamily not being allowed by rights, max building unit density of 450, this is a requirement that, that would require us to be max, or minimum density of 750 total units. And so, we needed to think outside the box here. Can we jump two slides? Thank you. So what does this mean for Norfolk? Recognizing the potential impact of this mandate early on, Town Hall and the Planning Board got together and undertook a rigorous analysis of the situation to devise a zoning strategy that aligns with our town's developmental vision while still meeting the state's requirements. It was tricky, but we strategically proposed two different MBTE housing overlay districts, one near the town center, where the MBTA station is, and the other, you know, down the street off of 1A and Pondville. This plan was designed with precision to ensure that the character of our B1 downtown district retains its mixed-use commercial ideals, fostering a walkable downtown area while enabling local small business spaces. Can we jump two slides? Okay, so, we try our best with maps, okay? It's very difficult, especially when they're on a screen like this. You do have a handout, or some of you may have grabbed the handout out there. It's two sides. It looks like this. It's a representation of what you see on the screen there. This, so this one shows the Town Hill B1 zone, right? So this is the Town Hill Overlay District. This is outlined in orange. You can see it on your, you know, paper as well, is the proposed district. It's been defined here, made up pretty much entirely of already-built or more or less unbuiltable lots. You know, the, the max likely redevelopment potential under this proposed zoning would be, in this part of the district, would be 94 units. And that's really a best-case scenario because... And that's really a best-case scenario, because we are not taking into consideration wetlands, we're not taking into consideration size of septic systems that we need to be, that would need to be installed on-site. This is just a basic calculation of, we are going to allow 18 units per acre, right? So, you see the 1.5-acre plot there. That would be 27 max units. Might not ever come to that, but, you know, that, that's just, we're trying to make this as simple and liberal as possible. Can we jump to the next slide? This here, this is our Pondville Overlay District. Because we do have focus in the downtown, next to the MBTA station, and because Pondville has easy access off of 115 to get down to that station, and right off of 1A, we get to have this second overlay district. It's been defined as a mix of vacant lots and lots suitable for redevelopment. So, there's more likely development potential here. But the, the likely potential for development of vacant lots would be about 185 units, and the likely redevelopment potential of existing lots would be about 104 units. Okay? Can we jump? There's going to be like five slides, so I apologize. It says, "How would no vote impact..." Second one, right here. Perfect. Great. Okay. Voting yes on Article 25 puts Norfolk in alignment with state mandates. It maintains our eligibility for future state funding and grants, which are crucial for future infrastructure projects. A no vote, however, might not only lead to legal repercussions from the state, as seen in other towns like Milton, but could also jeopardize grant funding that Norfolk will look to seek in the future to help our sustainable and responsible growth goals. Think about help building out our roads, or maintaining and fixing our roads, MassWorks projects, like the proposed sewer improvements. These are all very important for our town. Next slide, please. So, here's a breakout of the 57 towns that have passed MBTA Community Zoning already. There are eight towns shown here that, that are, that did vote no. They are joined recently by Boxborough and Seekonk, which in the last 48 hours have also voted no. Of note, Rockport did vote yes, but their residents, or a group of residents are suing the town about that vote. And Holden is on perpetual hold, waiting for the results of the Milton case, which would not finish until, or there would be no decision there until they'd be out of compliance. So, yeah, that's important to note. Next slide? All right. Thank you. So, listen, we don't agree with, or we might not all agree with the state's mandate. It's a little ham-fisted, but it's clear that voting yes on Article 25 is most likely in the best interest of the town. I've seen that as a member of the Planning Board. I think Advisory Board sees it as well, which is why they voted in favor of this. The best course of action for Norfolk at this moment is to vote yes, because this vote isn't just about zoning, it's about our positioning our town for sustainable growth and financial stability. So, we will probably be able to field some questions on this, and I sincerely hope for your support on this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So, questions and comments? Let me, yeah, please come down to the mics. Let me, and I'm going to allow some righteous indignation about the state kind of ramming this through in the towns, but I think we all get, no one is particularly happy about the state telling us what to do with our zoning. So, we get that...
You took the words right out of my mouth.
And, and again, I don't mind a couple of those comments, but I think we can all appreciate that that's going to happen. So, please, name, address, and...
Jack Oliver, 84 Barrel Place. You stole my thunder. My first reaction was, here we again, here again, we have another mandate that the state is trying to shut down our throat. And where does it end? Where do they keep, they keep telling us what we can do in our town? And it's ridiculous. I mean, I'm willing to take a no, you know, no vote on this right now. I mean, how many units, my question is, how many totaled units are there going to be? He said 174. What's the maximum number of units that we're talking about here, if all of the districts fill out to their maximum? Do you know what that is?
And I'll let them answer that question.
383?
But let's, I want to be clear, this is not a building mandate. In fact, much of these districts, as I think you just heard, are, include places that have been recently built upon by actual affordable housing projects. So, this is not, this does not mean we get all those units. This is just sets-up zoning that complies with the state. It does raise the potential for that many units.
So, are you saying...
But that would mean tearing down everything that exists on all of those lots and building them up again.
You mean like Norfolk Village, that area there, would count to a discount, or you'd have to tear it down?
No, no. So, what exists now isn't part of the count. We're zoning for potential to reach a certain number of units that the state wants us to do. They're not requiring that we actually build it.
They're not, they're not forcing us to build it?
Absolutely not.
But they're just forcing us to zone it that way?
It's a, I would, I would term it a little bit of window dressing, but I think the Planning Board, I think what you heard from them is that they carefully plan these districts to include as many areas as possible that are likely not to be built on any time.
But a developer can come in and, and build something and propose it, and there's no special permit needed. Is that what I heard?
There, I mean, there can be some special permits under MBTA zoning, but there's a lot of by right. You're right. 100% right, Jack.
Okay. I made my point. I think it's, I think it's crazy. I mean, where do we draw the line with the state? It's unbelievable. Thank you.
You're welcome. Over, over this side?
Melissa Bruzy, 9 Valentine Drive. Sorry, I'll just take this off. I'm with Jack, was it? I'm with you. What else is going to come? I mean, really? We look at the projections for the school-aged population. If we build 300-plus new units, I don't even know how you could fit that many units on that size parcel of land, unless you do apartments, or condos, or, that's right down the street from where I live. So, yeah, it's concerning. I would be curious as to, you know, what we're talking in terms of what the state gives us versus how much it would build, how much it would take to build these units, what the return would be. And again, it doesn't, doesn't really matter, in my opinion. I'm a no. So, thank you.
The other mic?
Jeff Burtnaugh, Wampanoag Avenue. I totally agree with Jack. I'm tired of the state mandating something and then not paying for it. Now, you could say, well, it's just a zoning change, and we don't, that doesn't cost you much. But it allows development of, the way I added up about 383 units, that will cost the town It's going to have an effect on the schools. It's going to have an effect on the water supply, which is always in, in short supply, public safety, and I'm sure many other areas of the town. And I'm wondering how it's going to affect the expansion of the schools. In other words, we're now talking about expanding Freeman Kennedy. Well, let's just throw that all out the window and start again with potentially this growth, and I don't know if that was included in the projections. My other question, or my question was, are these units, if they're affordable, are they going to be assessed as the full value, the market value, or are they going to be assessed at an affordable rate for tax purposes?
So, to, to be clear, and I'll let the Planning Board or our Town Planner, not all of the units are affordable.
Okay.
A percentage of them.
But those that are, would they be...
The, the goal of this is to create multifamily housing. A percentage, 10% at least, has to be affordable generally, but the idea is to create the kind of housing that might be more workforce housing. Just...
Okay. And my last point, I understand the downtown area, because certainly that's near the train station, but I was looking briefly at some of the, the slides and the, and the stuff in the warrant, and I don't understand how Pondville could be part of this, because it seems to be, I haven't measured it, more than half a mile away. And second of all, they talk about walking to things. I just checked on Google Maps, and I don't see any sidewalks there.
So, perhaps someone on the, the Planning Board could say what the rationale was for using the Pondville area, and how they came up with that, and why the state feels that that would meet their model? If we could, and, you know, it doesn't have to be a lengthy explanation, but if we could get a summary. Rich, is that you? I see you standing. They left you standing, Rich.
Right. Good evening, Richard McCarthy, Norfolk Town Planner. The state allows through guidance document for the MBTA zoning areas outside the 0.5 radius from a community rail station, our case. So, the Pondville area is an area that already has developed, there is multifamily zoning already allowed there under existing zoning. It is an area with other commercial areas, so there is a mix of uses, which could be supportive to housing, so that guidance is available to us. Important note about the Pondville area, and many of you probably have heard about our effort to bring forward the Mediacom and Greenway along the abandoned rail bed. Well, the fact that we've been collaborating with Walpole and Rentham on the Mediacom and Greenway would be a transportation option, a recreational option, that would abut this district. In so fact, is that we have worked towards a grant from the state to be able to get the design engineering and permitting for the Mediacom and Greenway. In the scoring for the grant, they look at these kind of components to assess projects like the Mediacom and Greenway. So, in this instance, in the Pondville area, it was a connection for that and other uses in the area. So, it allows for distribution of the housing. In terms of both districts, the dimensional requirements that are under the underlying zoning remain in place. So, for example, height is three stories, that remains the same. The minimum lot area, again, remains the same. Coverage, percent coverage on a lot remains the same. So, what we did is we tried to craft the zoning in both districts to comply with the, with the town's already put forward in terms of dimensional requirements to meet the, the guidelines for the MBTA zoning. So, that's why we selected the Pondville area.
Thank you, Rich.
And a little bit more.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Kinsey, 6 Silver Fox Road. So, first, I want to say that I do appreciate the Advisory Committee. I feel like the strategy that they took in zoning was to comply with the law, but realistically to minimize the actual possible build as much as possible. So, I do very much appreciate that. I have two questions. The first being, when this case goes before the Massachusetts Supreme Court between the Attorney General and the Town of Milton, if it is deemed that the state cannot legally mandate this of towns, and we do vote to zone it, can we unzone it at that point? Can we undo our vote? And my second question being, I understand that the state was kind of trying to pacify people with this act by saying that it's only for zoning, we're not mandating the actual building. I don't have a lot of faith in what the state says right now, to be honest with you. So, what is to stop the state, once everyone has these areas zoned, to then come in with a new act that does mandate building? What protections do we have if we do zone this, that the actual building will stay with, the, the decision will stay with the people of Norfolk?
Okay. So, let me, let me see, I'll answer those, and Town Council can back me up on this. So, on your first question, yes, we could, we could rezone it out of existence if, in fact, the Milton case, which is going to be argued in October, probably won't be decided for quite some time after that. Yes, this is like any other zoning bylaw, that we could come back here and get rid of if we, if we didn't like it. I think that result is unlikely in the Milton case, but you never know. It's the court. The, the, the second question that you have, the, the state can do a lot of things. I mean, if they want to take over lots and buy properties and get subsidies and build, that's fine. They don't have the ability to tell us, as a town, to appropriate money in this body and build. They can pass laws to make it easier for developers to do, like 40B, but they can't make us spend our money to build.
Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. Those are good questions. Over here. Tom, is that all right?
I concur.
Thank you.
Moderator Talib.
Hi. I'm Ben Guarick at 76 Union Street. I'm a recent newcomer to town. I moved here with my family a few years ago, and we absolutely love it. We consider ourselves really lucky to be here. We like the people. We love the character, and we think it's a well-run community. Having said that, I can't imagine doing anything to try to deny those same opportunities to other people who would want to come and live here and enjoy our town. And I'm not going to talk about what the state is making us do or not making us do, but I'm going to talk about this, because I think it's really a moral issue. I think this represents the absolute smallest step a town like Norfolk could take to appear welcoming and to appear considerate of the needs of other people. I'm part of a generation that I think is well-known for struggling to be able to afford housing. I'm a professional. It took me decades and decades to save, to get, to be able to live in this town, and I appreciate it so much. I never take it for granted. And for us to base our decision purely on speculation of, in terms of what might happen to a school population years down the road, what developer may come along 10, 20 years and want to redevelop a parcel, and whether or not that's going to require us to hire an extra fireman or police officer, well, we have, in, at the same time, facts that we cannot deny, that there is a shortage of housing in this state, in this region, that there are growing populations that show no likelihood of decreasing, and that people need a place to live. And so, those are certainties. There is no speculation about that. And there's no speculation about the fact that passing this proposed zoning amendment tonight will create more opportunity for people to have those chances. And so, I would just ask everybody to, to, you know, take a second to step back, and before they vote, consider it from that end, because we really have a lovely town here, and I think that it would be a great gesture for us to do what we can to share it with other people. Thanks.
Teresa Frenal, 75 Fruit. So, I guess my, my question is, sorry, I'm short. So, I guess my question is, if we have this large influx of apartment buildings being built, and we would have a large influx of students potentially, I know that we receive funds from the state, and I know that we would potentially not receive those funds if we vote this down. I'd like to know, what have we received for funds in the past? Not necessarily towards the schools, but grants and whatnot? And what would we be spending on additional schools? We might potentially need to build a school, additional fire, additional police. And I know everyone says, we don't know what we're going to be building, we don't know. I actually just moved here from a town about five years ago, that the same exact things are said over and over and over again. Don't worry, it's just an apartment building here, and don't worry, it's just a condo complex here, and, don't worry, it's affordable, but it's only 10% affordable. And now, excuse me, you can't afford to live in any of those apartments, in any of those condos, and that town is asking for a $10 million override for their schools. And, you know, this town has a lot of charm, and I just don't see gigantic apartment buildings popping up, you know, even if they're in one particular area. And I just don't know that this is going to help with affordable housing, because I know a lot of people who still can't afford to live in the particular town that I came from, that promised affordable housing over and over and over again, and they built thousands upon thousands of apartment buildings and condos. And so, what I'm asking, I guess, is, what have we received in funds? And if we allow this, what could we potentially be spending?
Okay. I do. So, I'm going to try and distill it, because I think some of that is, is hypotheticals, but I'm going to try and get...
Well, it's not, because I actually just watched it in the town that I moved from.
So, no, no, but in terms of future spending, it is difficult to predict, but let me try and get some answers for you from folks that we have here. There are, as you saw on the screen, there were three named grants that specifically we would be deprived of. As we also heard... As we also heard from Mr. McCarthy, we will fare worse in other grants in the scoring, but sticking to just those three grants, and I'm wondering if maybe Justin or anyone else knows if either A, we have had in the last 10 to 20 years any of those grants, or B, we have any of those grant applications in the pipeline?
Yes, I think Rich can add to it. There's a grant for the MetaComma Greenway, I think approximately, I don't know where Rich is, there he's rich, about $1 million. The town is actively submitting a grant for a one-stop shop, it's generally a mass works grant. I've applied for $350,000 from the state, that is associated largely with the Housing Choice compliance. There's also a Housing Choice Grant Program, as well as an Infrastructure Program Grant that I'm applying for as well in collaboration with our planning and DPW departments. So those are, those are active grant applications that we're pursuing right now.
Great. And I guess the second question, I don't know if the Planning Board was able to mine down this deep, was there any fiscal impact analysis if it got built fully out? I think, I think we can tell that the schools will be impacted, potentially.
I mean, we may need to build a new school, that could be $43 million.
Right. So I'll let Mr. Peck respond on that.
So there was no future fiscal analysis with it, that wasn't part of the, the process? But what I did want to reiterate is something that Gary had said in the presentation, is those numbers up there were probably the, that just took the lots that were potentially buildable or vacant, and, and it was, that's how many units per acre could be built based upon, based upon the zoning. But then you have to look at, there's, some of those lots are wet, you have to do septic, and you have setbacks, you have height requirements, so those numbers are going to dramatically decrease based upon what you truly could build on a lot. Like a one-acre lot's not going to sustain 18 units, it's just not, given all those criteria. So it's going to be much less than that, but we wanted to provide you with, this is, this is the, the math if you could build it, but realistically, you won't be able to build that much. And, and what, what we've seen is, if they do build something, a lot of those units are probably going to be one- or two-bedroom dwelling units, which typically don't have kids, or the ratio to kids would be very minimal. So the, the impact then on the schools should be, should be minimal. They'd be more like starter, a kind of a starter residence, and something that they could hop on the train, go work in town, come back, and then hopefully, as they built their family, they would then move into something bigger in our town.
All right, I was, I was reading it more that they wanted larger complexes.
I think there's zoning-
Depending on where it was.
And they can correct me if I'm wrong, I think they kept the general height and, and mass of it more or less down.
It has to follow our current bylaws. Like you would not see a six-story gigantic apartment building, because that doesn't meet our zoning requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions.
Just trying to get you educated.
No, those are excellent questions.
Very difficult to decide.
I, I agree.
And just want to add one point, so in terms of the dwelling types, they may be duplexes, they could be townhouses, so it, it's not, this is not about apartments necessarily, that is an option, but there are, like I said, duplexes, which we already have in town, and condominiums, townhouse-style houses, which get to the idea of trying to provide different housing types for people in town beyond just a single-family home. So that's different housing types, just want to clarify that.
Thank you, Rich. On the microphone over here.
Jenny How, 134 North Street. I couldn't agree more with the last person who spoke about welcoming, having Norfolk be a welcoming place, and I'm also a newer resident, and I'm, I look forward to there being more people, especially with the housing crisis. My major, the major thing that I often think about with development is, I'm just curious if there's, what the consideration is with just habitat for people that aren't humans, just like what any of that is, because I, I know there's a lot about building, and I'm just wondering about habitat.
None, none of this, of what you see exempts anyone from having to comply with either the State Wetland Protection Act, or our local wetland protection bylaw, which is significantly more strict than the State Wetland Protection Act, or the Endangered Species Program that is run by the state. So all of that regulation is intact, as well as all of our regulations of local septic systems. We don't have, except for a very tiny portion of town, sewer, so a lot of that regulation still exists in terms of environmental protection.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Over here, on my right.
Hi, everybody, I'm Lucy Bullock Seager, 8 King Philip Trail. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, everybody who serves the town, it's really important, and thank you residents for showing up, it's very exciting. So I am voting yes on this, because the Planning Board members are very thoughtful, they have everybody's best interest in mind here. We do want to be in compliance because of the following reasons. As a solar developer, boo, everybody hates solar here too, that's fine, but we know that suing a town costs us at least $250,000, and to defend against being sued by the state, try doubling that. We just went through all of the budgets that are very, very stringent, and then be, on top of that, have to lose funding that is super valuable, getting those roads paved for Thomas over there is super important, and we need to be able to grow, and we need to be able to handle the new trucks that are coming. We need to be able to have snowplows, not tear up our side roads, things like that. So I just really urge people to think about this reasonably, and also, just on the housing point, it is super important. I am a younger family person, I am also a millennial, boo, people hate millennials, but also, there's younger millennials than I am, they're called peak millennials, and they absolutely got screwed, because they are the largest cohort of millennials in our generation. And so now, we're getting squeezed by this housing crisis, we're getting squeezed by inflation, and then we have these opportunities to build starter homes, or, here's a thought, homes that are accessible for seniors, so that they can move out of their larger homes and allow the next generation to come in, and so that they can still stay in a tight-knit community, that they can walk, maybe even get a shorter ride to the senior center, things like that. So I just think, think critically about this. I trust the people that we have elected to our planning boards, and to our other committees and our select boards, and I think this is a really good idea, and I just really encourage everybody to vote yes on it tonight. Just, there's so much to lose and so much to gain, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Lucarello, 16 Creek Drive. I guess a couple of things. All night we've heard about how our town basically is too affluent, I guess, to receive grant funding. I think to ignore the potential costs that these units could provide in the long run is kind of short-sighted. I, I will say, credit to the Planning Board, I spoke to Gary, I believe, and Rich during the week, I had a lot of questions. I think to proceed without some kind of, you know, financial impact on the town is kind of, you know, questionable. I'm glad that someone else answered the question, asked the question, you guys answered about, you know, could we pull this back if the courts go a certain way? I think that's pretty important, because again, I think we're seeing a lot of the state forcing stuff down on us. And again, we, I moved here in 2018, and again, the semi-ruled charm of the town, all those things, I understand that there's a housing crisis and all that, but I don't know if forcing a town like Norfolk to become a town like, you know, Walpole, or, you know, just move close to the city gets denser and denser and denser, I don't know if that's the answer so much as they could build the same amount of housing in one or two apartment buildings in Boston or Cambridge. So to, the idea that we're going to just absorb all this new infrastructure, have the fire department expand more, have the police department, it's going to have a lot of knock-on effects. I'm on the school building advisory committee, you know, we're already seeing how we're have to, you know, what that, this looks like, we're trying to put together a picture for the town to do that in a somewhat sustainable way, but the idea that, okay, you know, double that again, you know, see what that population does. Again, I think they did this about as thoughtfully as they could do, but I think, I really want people to think long and hard about the down-the-road impacts this may have on the town, and, you know, we already know our real estate taxes are pretty aggressive, I don't think that whatever these units are would probably carry their expenses, especially if they end up being more geared towards families, but I guess we'll have to, we'll have to wait and see. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lutz.
I just want to make a couple of quick points about the two districts. The B1, as folks who attend this meeting regularly are probably aware, was rezoned three or four years ago to significantly increase the potential density in a mixed-use way. The main change that the zoning for the B1 did, as it was presented to us on the advisory committee, is it, it allowed for straight residential development on some of the parcels in the B1. As you've noticed, the B1 has not grown significantly since we passed our mixed-use development, and maybe it's because people don't live there, and people don't want to build any commercial until they see that they have foot traffic. So if we allow for some residential-only in the B1, maybe some of the commercial that we hope will happen will come along behind that. The other thing to keep in mind is that Pondville, for better or worse, is our main commercial district in town. It's on Route 1A, it's close to Route 1, it's close to 495. It has had the most significant amount of non-residential development over the last 10 years, with the medical building and some of the other buildings have gone up. Again, if there are people living down there, you might see more of that. I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and about every three or four years, we go through a big, we need more commercial development. This might be a way to do it. You've got bodies, they'll start shopping, they'll start working here, and you will hopefully see that commercial development come along.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. On the other microphone.
Hello, neighbors, electeds, everyone else. My name is Courtney Starling, I live at 76 Union Street. I am here to vote in favor of this regulation and this zoning. In part, I've spent the last 20 years on the road in Massachusetts as a housing planner. I have seen and talked to and spent time throughout the state, throughout the region of New England, talking with business owners, with residents, councils on aging, seniors, it doesn't really matter who, everybody's got a housing issue, generally speaking. Whether your house is too big, too small, it costs too much, it is, you know, you've got uncontrollable property taxes, the maintenance is getting out of hand, so on and so forth. I see quite a few people in this room who are admittedly a bit older than me, they may be transitioning in their phase of life, they may be looking to downsize. I'm not sure where they're planning on going. I'm a relatively newcomer to town, I moved here in part because, A, I have a banger of a house, but B, I came here because of the housing diversity that I saw. I'm a housing planner, I can see it on the ground, I can tell you a 40B from 100 miles away, it does not matter. Our town hill has been the representative photograph that the state has been using in all of the trainings with respect to MBTA communities. We already have a neighborhood that already looks like this, it's in the new zoning, but this, if, we're not talking about anything different from what we already have here. But what we already have here and what we can build more of is a more diverse housing stock. We have a ton of single-family homes, those are the biggest cost generator when it comes to school kids. Now, I went to public school, I'm sure a lot of you did too, thank you all for educating me, I plan to continue to do the same for your children. However, you know, keeping that in mind, we are talking about housing diversity, so building something other than our 95% single-family home stock, which would allow for people with different housing needs to experience different housing within our communities. So let's say you happen to get old, which I think all of us are going to do if we are so lucky, but if we get old, eventually you may have trouble in your 1959-era single-family home, getting into that built-in tub. It's going to be a problem, it's not safe. If we develop housing that meets the needs of a changing society, we are getting old here in New England, not for nothing, but that's what's happening, and in the old demographic, those, our biggest rise is not in big households, it's in single-person households. So that big four, five-bedroom house that you're paying 15 grand a year in property taxes isn't reasonable. We have to build other housing types, and in order to do that, we need regulations that are a vehicle. I sit on the Board of Appeals, I know how y'all feel about 40B and the state, full disclosure, I also work for the state, I'm a grant administrator. I know how the money works, this would be a problem if we don't get it, just full disclosure, we'll say that, but, you know, it's, we have to adjust. If we don't, the only housing we get is 40B, it doesn't follow local zoning, it bypasses all local control, nobody likes that. If you don't like the state doing this version, you definitely don't like the other version. And so if you want local control over what housing gets built, who is in your community, which may include some renters, or maybe even condos for ownership, doesn't really matter to me, I don't care what, how you're paying for your housing, but it might open the opportunity for the people who are already here to stay here, which I think a lot of you do. The leading person who moves into, I used to do affordable housing lotteries for whatever it's worth, you know who wants into those housing units? The people who are already there. This is Norfolk, yes, it's a lovely community, but I've got to tell you the truth, not everybody in Cambridge is like, we got to move there immediately. And it's also not fair to say, Cambridge, you have to absorb the burdens of the region on your own, or how about you, Brockton, Salem, Lowell, everywhere where you go for multifamily. It's not the end of the world, a little housing diversity won't kill us, it will in fact make us fiscally stronger. Thank you.
How do you follow that?
So, so you don't have to, Rob.
I'm going to say, let me take the other end of it, from housing diversity side. Relative newcomer to Norfolk, 35 years or so, and I raised my kids here, and there is nowhere in Norfolk for my kids to buy a house that they can afford and live, other than my house, which is a problem. All right? Thank you.
Stephanie Ackley, 52 Boardman Street. To elaborate on your point, and your point, and everybody's point tonight, we're, we're a growing town, we're a growing generation, we're seeing, you know, elderly folks wanting to stay in the community, we're seeing younger folks want to move in, affordable housing in, in this method, according to, you know, these new MBA, MBTA changes, can really benefit the town. As a working, small-business owner, also, you know, I have a job, I have a child, I use the sidewalks, I walk around downtown, I think it's imperative that we give developers additional incentives with the, the program here, in order to, you know, allow uses, mixed use, to come into downtown, to offset tax burdens, to bring more commercial in. And so I think, I would, I would actually appreciate if Mr. Peck or the planning, town planner, could elaborate more on the benefits of bringing mixed use and sort of driving that to the town center in accordance with the master plan, and, you know, how, how this could impact the town, big picture, in the direction that I think a majority of people want to see the town grow. I think it's important as well that, again, the, the, the tax incentives, the, the, the commercial, the revenue that's brought in, brought by the commercial business that's brought in mixed-use buildings, for example. So if they developed one of these houses, it's still a, or, if they developed one of the apartment buildings, it's still in accordance with bylaw regulations, unless they go for a special permit, and then it would be zoning and everybody else involved. But I think it's important to speak to the, the mixed use and how that can benefit the community.
So I'm going to, I do want to get through the, the remainder of the comments, but Mr. Peck, if you could maybe state briefly the importance, if any, in the, kind of the, the master planning of having mixed use downtown and the benefits for the community?
So we did approve a B1 zoning district a few years back that, that was mixed use. We've seen very little development on that, if, if really any. So there are, this, this overlay district does not encompass all of the B1, part of the B1, but not all of it, so we do still have quite a, quite a few empty lots, vacant lots, that are not in this overlay district, that are still in the B1 zoning, that would be for multi, multi-use. And it's kind of the chicken or the egg. I think, I forget who said it, but it was David, it's the chicken or the egg. Right now, what we're hearing from developers are, is like, we don't, we're concerned about building a mixed-use building, because we're not sure if we're going to be able to rent out that commercial space, because we don't have the foot traffic and the people living in the downtown. So this, this gives us an opportunity to provide that- So this gives us an opportunity to provide that vehicle, to get some residential down there, and then the commercial will follow. And again, we, this overlay district doesn't encompass all the B1 zoning, so we were trying to be very mindful about how much of that and where we position it.
Thank you, Mr. Peck.
Good evening, everybody, Brian Pillar, Meeting House Road. I've lived in town for over 30 years myself, and would like just to bring some context. I've owned multiple properties in this town, I've raised four kids in this town, I have many friends in this town. I reject the issue that this is a moral issue, that was stated earlier, I have to say that out loud, this is not a moral issue, this is a property-value issue, this is a quality of life for the Norfolk community. I understand all the dynamics that come with this, and I do appreciate the planning board and everyone's volunteering here to make the time to help this town be better, but I will not stand here and allow moral issues to drive decisions in this town. I appreciate and I respect everyone's opinions, this is not a political statement, but this is about property value, this is about keeping the integrity of our community, and if this is a vote for zoning, I personally would encourage everyone to reject that and let's see where this goes, because as far as I'm concerned, nobody is going to put, hold me accountable for helping someone else buy a house in this community. I bought my own house, I've raised four kids here, they will afford to buy a house here, because they're well-educated right in this building, and it provided them opportunities to go on in the fields and trades that they want. And I really reject the political aspects that I've heard tonight, and I won't accept it as a resident here. Thank you.
At the other mic?
Good evening, I'm Valerie Braich, I live on 9 Freedom Trail, so I live in the Pondville area. I run Hill Street all the time, that's my hill repeat area. I have no issue with this at all, totally for it. It's, those two industrial buildings there, I would be just so happy to see those go, it is so sketchy at 5:00 AM, when there's random cars pulling in there, and I don't know why. We have sidewalks, we're completely accessible, you can walk from 115, so very close to Hill Street, you can walk all the way to the center of town, you can also walk all the way to Patriot Place, so there is a grocery store there, there's all of the amenities that Patriot Place has to offer, so I'm completely for this.
Thank you.
Sir?
Kevin Gronrus, I've been a, at 54 Maple Street, I've been a Norfolk resident since 2010, finally have two young girls now. I want them to be able to grow up in a small town like Norfolk that I chose 12, 14 years ago. And I think with this zoning, it's going to change that, it's going to change the dynamic of the town. I think the town is better as it is now, our taxes are going to raise anyway, we're going to have to buy another million, $1.4 million fire truck, probably another ambulance after all this, school's going to have to grow. I'm a no. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi, Kristi Burns at 32 Union. My question comes around, I attended one of the meetings about this project, and there just seems to be a lot of different ways we're talking about the potential loss of grants, and I heard it talked about from the stage tonight, as though it's, we're definitely not going to get that money. Is that the case, or is it potentially that we won't receive some of these grants?
Among the three grant categories that they put on the screen, that's a definite no, that we won't get those grants, and then the remaining question is, will we score more poorly with other types of grants because we don't do this? And that's more of a maybe. So those three grants, including the Mass Works, which a lot of towns use for roadway construction, things like that, those are definite no's?
Okay, thank you.
Walter?
Yes, good evening, my name is Walter Byron, I live at 80 Fruit Street, and I just want to say that, you know, when you listen to all these numbers that potentially could be developed in town, that can get kind of scary. I mean, you can get visions of these large, multi-unit developments popping up like dandelions in your front lawn, but really, we have experience where developers are very practical people, and they've got to make money when they put up a building. For example, we had a pre-approved 76-unit building in town over where Bork's Restaurant used to be, and the developer finally gave up, he said, "I can't make it work, I can't make the numbers work." There's another piece of land down in Pondville that's sitting there idle, it was pre-approved for eight units, standalone units, that too hasn't gone forward. So visions of developers rolling into town and building all these units, and, oh my God, we're going to change the character of the town overnight, isn't going to happen, folks. It may happen a little bit here and a little bit there, but the numbers that the planning board showed you are way overblown in terms of what really eventually will happen, in my view. So a vote, if we vote no tonight, it'll make you feel good because you're sticking it to the state, but I think you really end up sticking it to yourselves in the town. We've talked about the grant issues, and there's more of them coming, I'm sure. There's plenty of needs for grants in this town, believe me. Thank you very much.
All right. So a couple of things here. Mr. Calcutt, you're in line, we have a newcomer in line, we have a visitor in line that I'm not necessarily inclined, unless it's something like of earth-shattering novelty, which I'm doubting, because we're getting into some of the similar arguments, so this is it, right here. And I'll hear from the visitor, like, incredibly briefly, because he seems somewhat earnest and interested in this, but this is it, and then we're going to vote. So Mr. Calcutt, briefly.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Calcutt, 25 Canterbury Lane. This is weird for me too, so we'll all get used to it, I promise. In 2017, I ran for the planning board for the first time. I ran for that body because of the fear and my perceived lack of a plan associated to affordable housing development and 40B here in Norfolk. I was concerned about what that meant for property owners, my backyard, and the open space that we had here in Norfolk. Throughout that one year on the planning board and then transitioning to the select board, I found out we had some great structures in place to be able to have ourselves be positioned a way to be able to see growth happen the way we wanted to. Thanks to Sue Jacobson with the Affordable Housing Trust, we had a housing production plan that was approved by the state, thanks to alignment between the planning board and the select board at the time, that was being pushed forward as an initiative for the town as a whole, but we needed to make that happen in a place that was best for our town. We had six 40B projects in the queue during that time, waiting to be at different points of approval or bill. So we started looking at town center, we appointed a B1 zoning committee that went over and started looking at ways that we could build out the areas that were most appropriate for growth, instead of having 40Bs pop out within our residential districts across the town. That was a two-and-a-half-year process, filled with community engagement events, visioning sessions, engagement with MAPC to help us craft a plan for town center that fit in with the expectations of the community as a whole. We got that approved in the spring of 2021, and then that transitioned into a master-plan process to update our existing plans for the town and how they interacted across the rest of the community. Through the master-plan process, we've had more community engagement sessions, we've listened to people, what they want to see in the future of Norfolk, not only for the next five years, but through 2035. Then we came to the MBTA zoning. We heard about this as part of the master-plan process from the get-go, and understood what some of those parameters were going to look like. So we got ahead of the eight ball, we started working to include some of those aspects, and made sure they were part of that vision that we heard so distinctly from the community. When the final guidelines came out, we found out that there was a few small tweaks we needed to make to be in full compliance. We had stayed ahead and proactive to ensure that we were able to make MBTA zoning work for Norfolk. So here we are today, trying to get the last few pieces of this passed, to ensure that we can continue on this road of proactive planning for our community, and ensure that we grow in the way that fits in with the expectations that we've heard from everybody here tonight. I'm not asking you to vote yes tonight to be able to sign on to state mandates moving forward. I'm not asking you to vote yes tonight for some kind of moral obligation to housing as a whole. I'm asking you to vote yes tonight to keep us going on the plan and the path that we have set forward, that has put us in a position to grow responsibly and within the parameters set forth by this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. I'm Barbara Ngat, 41 Myrtle Street, Norfolk, I've been a resident here for about 15 years. So just a couple of things I wanted to clarify or to at least think about. So we saw numbers on this piece of paper tonight, 300 units, 200 units, max, wetlands, setbacks, septic systems. You know, I don't think we still have the numbers in front of us as a town, so this is a financial impact, right? We talked about moral discussions tonight, we talked about political, how about just the facts, right? So let's look at Chief over there, fire, EMS, what's this going to do to the impact for our town? We're already over-budgeted, which means we're going to have to do an override on two and a half again, our property taxes are going to go up, we don't have mixed-use, we are talking about grants. So let's all be clear about grants. Grants are not guaranteed money. You apply for them, the state looks at the needs, you get them or you don't. So I happen to work in the town of Milton, excuse me, they've lost $184,000 in grants by saying no to this. That's it. I'm sorry, they haven't done legal fees yet. Sorry, $184,000, that's all they lost. They're going to go to Supreme Court on this in Massachusetts, they'll make a determination. Now with the nine other towns, do we want to join this or not? So again, just because we apply for a grant, what I, the numbers I heard tonight are $1.4 million, that's not even a debt override on addition to a school, that's not servicing our debt. So let's be responsible, have all the facts laid out in front of us, and understand what we're looking at, and then we can make determinations. But I think we're not doing ourselves justice by not having these numbers laid out. What is the maximum that we're going to build? We're talking about, we looked at pieces of property on this piece of paper, there are houses on here, or there's commercial, so they're going to take it by eminent donation? Are they going to sell it? What are we going to do with it? Let's have the answers and make educated decisions, and also think about the impact for the people who have created their lives in this town, who live in these neighborhoods. I don't live in that neighborhood, but I'm still concerned, as a citizen of Norfolk, as a taxpayer of Norfolk. Let's do the right thing, and just take the time and understand it. And if we're not sure, then we vote no, or we defer it, and we vote at a later time. But do, look around, look at your neighbors, look at the impact on our community, look at our school systems, we heard that we have this bulge going through our school system, we're going to put in temporary classrooms, we just approved the Great Fire Department, we have a new Metcalf Police Department, we have new engines, apparatus, let's do the right thing, right? So there has to be some type of checks and balances, we don't write blank checks that we don't understand what the impact is to our financial condition. I think it's irresponsible, just my opinion, and thank you for your time.
Very, very briefly.
Yeah, so my name is Nathaniel Hunter, I'll keep this very quick. I've heard a lot of arguments tonight, and the one thing that's really bothered me is it seems a lot of them are based on fear. If you look at the numbers, the total units that they're looking to add, it can be scary at first, but I really think it's smart to look at the net difference. So right now, this whole Pondville area is available for high-capacity residential, just at a lower unit count. So right now, if you were to develop it as-is, you could put 180 units there. So I don't see it happening, I don't, you know, we've had 18 units built in the area. So just voting this in doesn't mean that it's all going to get developed, but not voting this in does mean you're going to lose that funding immediately. Now, if Milton is successful, you can always vote it down, but voting no guarantees a loss, voting yes might give some additional housing in the long term, but it hasn't made any change yet with the current bylaws, so I think it's smart to just move forward with it.
Thank you. Last comment?
Thanks, Larry Clark, UConn Street, resident about 40 years in Norfolk. Just two quick questions. If this passes this evening, does the state still have to approve this?
Yes, two, the Attorney General has to approve it, and the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, I assume they've already, this has already been vetted with them, so it's kind of pre-approved there, and, you know, and a town council can maybe chime in here as to whether or not, in his review, it met the applicable standards for AG approval. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Harrington, Town Council. So we did share it with the head of the municipal law unit, Margaret Hurley of the AG's office, and she told us that it was an approvable bylaw. We did share it with Housing and Livable Communities, we have not heard back from them, but in my review, I believe it does meet their standards.
And the other, just my second question, these units, are they required to be affordable? You know, 10% affordable?
10%, of them?
I mean, is this part of the requirement, or is it something that would have to come through a 40B?
No, 40B has nothing to do with it.
So, but are they required, then, to have 10%?
And they would get essentially added to our subsidized housing inventory, our affordable housing inventory, through another process that comes along with that permit?
No, I understand that, more my concern would be, so they can't circumvent the bylaws, like in a 40B, a lot of the bylaws can be waived.
I mean, no.
Because this is going to be, still have affordable, are they still going to be able to waive bylaws?
No.
As far as the building?
This is the bylaw that they would operate under, not under Chapter 40B. Mr. Garrity, what's your point of order?
My point is a query on the underlying existing zoning, what is the affordability requirement for this?
So, in this, and I think it varies wherever you are, do we have an inclusionary zoning requirement already in either B1 or in the Pondville area that would require 10% right now? That's a point of information, by the way, Rob, let's get your parliamentary procedure correct.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
So yeah, right now, and this is not because of the MBTA communities, it's something we already have existing in town. It's a sliding scale, we start at 10%, right, you work your way up, 15, 20%, that's what our inclusionary bylaw is.
That already exists.
That already exists, that doesn't change, okay? So this MBTA Community Zoning Act does not change any of that.
So we're already getting affordable units if someone does some multifamily?
Well, no, there's no question, we need affordable. There's no question there, I'm just asking that, because they're going through the 10% so.
There's not a waiver process.
They can't change the zoning as the town has.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Do you have a clarification, Mr. McCarthy, because we're done with this debate?
I know, I apologize, but, so for these two overlay districts, it's 10%. The other, outside these overlay districts, it's a sliding scale of 10, 15, 20.
Right, that's what he said, already, so.
He did?
Yeah, he did.
Maybe I was listening differently, sorry.
Dave, we're ready to vote. Mr. Terrio, Mr. Bakanowski, are you both still here? Well, I think we're going to probably want to count this, but let's see how we go with the voice vote. Again, no shouting, please. This requires a simple majority vote under this, unlike other zoning bylaws. So I'm going to try a voice vote. All those in favor of adopting this zoning amendment, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, say no.
No!
Okay, I just, even though I, I would caution again that we don't need to shout this, I'm going to count it, just to be on the safe side, because it's an important matter. Okay, so Andy, are you going to do?
I'm going to do this way, Paul.
You all know what you're counting? So, what area, Andy, do you know what areas you're counting, and Paul, do you know what areas?
I'm here, I'm going to do this way, Paul, I'm going to do that way.
Okay. So I think, I think at the, from the camera forward, Paul is you, right? Is that okay?
Yeah, in the middle?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, and don't forget, and you've got the stage as well.
Okay.
Okay?
All the way across. All the way across.
All right, hey, we're going to take our time and do it right, it's fine. Shh. So we're going to do the standing count. All those in favor, please stand. No visitors standing, please. No visitors standing, please. You're all, you got every, did you, and you got over on the other side, too? Okay. Paul, did you get the, up here? Paul, what's your number? 61. Andy, what's your number?
66, yes.
Six, okay. All those opposed, please stand. Seven? Wait, seven, seven, okay. I just wanted to be clear. Fifty-five? Okay. So with 127 in favor and 62 opposed, it does pass by a majority. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Andy. Okay. We, um, this is gonna go pretty quick from here on out, I think, so please stick around.
Article 14, Mr. Garrity, appropriation of wastewater. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from wastewater division enterprise fund retained earnings the sum of?
No, 37. It's changed? Let's, let, let's try again, Mr. Garrity.
I apologize, folks. I really thought you were gonna send us home. All right.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from the wastewater division enterprise fund retained earnings the sum of $60,231 to cover the shortfall in actual revenues for FY '24.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Garrity?
So this change affects the FY '24 budget that we are currently in, not the FY '25 budget we voted earlier. Uh, the article provides the select board the ability to transfer funds without further appropriation by town meeting to cover revenue shortages in the wastewater enterprise fund in FY '24. Revenues collected in FY '24 this year were below the level contemplated by the wastewater enterprise budget passed at town meeting, requiring this article to allow this select board to cover the shortages using other funds, specifically the retained revenue portion of the fund.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 15, special legislation for wastewater, Mr. Garrity?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 15 as printed in the warrant.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Garrity?
Article 15 authorizes the select board to petition the general court for legislation that amend the statute creating the wastewater district, uh, which passed in 2022. This legislation makes two changes. First, it allows the town to charge a capacity fee in addition to the regular usage fee for uses. Um, this would allow the town to charge parcels that were parties to the original agreement that governed the system when it was privately held and which originally contributed to the operation of the system, but have since ceased making payments, uh, since their legal obligations ceased when the district was created. Without the financial participation of the original capacity holders, the wastewater district costs will fall disproportionately onto other users, making the system either unsustainably expensive or requiring subsidies from other sources. The second change allows, uh, capacity holders to sell their capacity to others. This would enable existing capacity holders who are not using the system to sell their capacity, allowing new users to join who presumably use the system. The supporters of this article on the committee believe that this change will help stabilize the economics of the water wastewater district. Some members of the committee were concerned that this novel approach, which proponents could not provide any precedent for in other municipalities in Massachusetts, uh, is not tested or customary and may have negative unintended consequences. The majority of the committee supported this effort to attempt to secure legislation that will allow the town to better spread the cost of the district among the original creators of the system.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Just a, a quick word. When we petition for special legislation, it's, we're petitioning for something that isn't quite covered under existing state laws. We're trying to make a pocket special law that would apply just to this situation. Sir, at the mic?
Uh, yes, hi, Jeff Burkner. Honestly, I don't quite understand what's going on with this thing, but it seems like, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's as if you built a water system and, and some small percentage of the people decided to take water, but if the water main goes by your property, you have to pay for it anyway. Is that what's going on, or am I, am I misinterpreting this?
Uh, I'll let others speak to it, but it, it does appear that if, if you were beholden of the original capacity, you are now on the hook for the cost to maintain that capacity. Is that fair to say? Tom, Mr. Harrington?
Yep, thank you, uh, Mr. Moderator, Tom Harrington, Town Council. So I'm just gonna give you a quick two-minute explanation. Um, you're, you're in the ballpark, but I, I think there's a little nuance that's important to understand. And if you look at the, the, um, plan above, there's a few things to know about this. First, the red outline is this wastewater district. So all those parcels that are contained within the red line are entitled to, um, uh, attach or be served by the wastewater treatment facility. The parcels in green are currently connected to the, um, to the wastewater treatment facility. The parcels in red have a, or, or had as part of the original arrangement, a contractual right to connect to the sewer system. So that, that's what makes this a little unique. And, and it is a unique situation because typically towns start from scratch, build a wastewater treatment plant, and then have a sewer system. We, um, we inherited or, or stepped into the shoes of the private developer to take over this. So it's a unique situation, and, and so we're trying to apply some unique solutions here. So what this means is, so the green, those parcels in green are, are currently participating and paying for the wastewater treatment facility. While the parcels in red are not, they still have arguably the right to connect um, with a certain amount of capacity, as opposed to the rest of those in the district who just have the right to connect if there is available capacity. So what we wanna do is, instead of sending them invoices for that, um, reserved capacity, we wanna be able to send them a tax bill. We're, we're really good at collecting taxes. We're not as good at just trying to get someone to pay an invoice. So that's, I think that's kind of the simplest way to put this. Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else at the mic, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say? Oh, is there another comment?
Hi, my name is Catherine Walzak, and I live on Meeting House Road in the condos. Um, we are one of the users, the main users of the wastewater treatment plant. When it was originally set up, uh, the capacity was divided amongst people who were going to develop in downtown, and the town supported it so that there could be development. Uh, a, a number of developments did not, in fact, get built. However, they were legally responsible for paying into the system. So we really need this to pass so that it doesn't fall on us. Those of us that live there have paid our bills, and it's, does, isn't fair that we should then absorb this cost for people who did not build but signed on for the capacity. So I encourage you to vote so that we don't end up footing the whole bill. Thank you.
Majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, no? It passes by a majority. Article 16, annual appropriations for the Community Preservation Act, Mr. Craig?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Craig?
The advisory committee recommends approval of this article. This standard annual article reserves funds from the Community Preservation Act revenues equal to the state mandated minimums of 10% for open space, 10% for affordable housing, and 10% for historic resources. The remainder is placed into undesignated funds and can be used for any allowable purpose.
Thank you. Seeing no one at the mic, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, no? It passes by a majority. Article 17, administrative expenses for the CPA, Mr. Craig?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Craig?
The advisory committee recommends approval of this article. The purpose of this article is to authorize the administrative budget for the Community Preservation Committee at $15,000, which would come from the Community Preservation Fund. This is the same amount that was approved in the current fiscal year's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Seeing no one at the mic requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, no? It passes by a majority. Article 18, Community Preservation Transfer to the Affordable Housing Trust, Mr. G?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. G?
Uh, the advisory committee recommends approval of this article. As noted in Article 16, the town annually designates 10% of Community Preservation Act funds into each of three areas, including the Community Housing Reserve, with the remainder held in an undesignated reserve. The Affordable Housing Trust annually requests an appropriation from the Community Housing Reserve. Every few years, the Affordable Housing Trust may request additional funds from the CPA's undesignated reserve to have it available to potentially go outside its normal formula and pay a bit more for a property in order to add another town, another home to the town's subsidized housing inventory. This article is requesting a total of $250,000 of CPA funds from the designated and undesig, designated reserves to support its mission to create or preserve affordable housing in Norfolk. The advisory committee voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you, Mr. G. Mr. Rosenberg?
I'd appreciate, um, hearing, uh, how this money will be used more, more precisely than just its being allocated. Yeah, are there any specific plans for the use of funds that you can describe?
So, um, Ms. Jacobson, if she can, she didn't do a report this year, but I think she's gonna give a little mini-report on what goes on. For your edification, Mr. Rosenberg, the Affordable Housing Trust, when we give them money, the purpose is that they can spend it without coming back here so they can move quickly and, uh, secure affordable housing opportunities. Ms. Jacobson, what do you got in the pipeline?
Uh, we, uh, requested these funds because, as everybody knows, housing has become much more expensive since COVID, and our hope is that we will be able to take this money. It can only be used to purchase a property and take some funds from the Affordable Housing Trust to add another unit to our subsidized housing inventory.
Are there, uh, sorry, are there specific properties that you're looking at? You don't need to describe them in detail, but is this just general in case something shows up? Or are there specific things you're, you are hoping to acquire?
At this point, there's nothing specific. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Thank you, Sue. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 19, CPA expense for some, um, uh, work over at Mirror Lake. Uh, Mr. G?
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 19.
It's been moved and seconded to indefinitely postpone. Mr. G?
Yeah, the friends of Mirror Lake had done a Phase 1 sediment analysis and would like to move forward with a more extensive Phase 2 study in order to qualify for potential state grants to dredge the lake. The advisory committee recognizes the worthwhile goal and potential benefits, but has concerns that the town does not have all of the information needed to make a fully informed decision. Additionally, the project is fully contingent on the town of Rantham approving its much larger share of the cost, but Rantham did not include it in the Springs Town Meeting. The vote to recommend indefinite postponement was unanimous by the committee.
Thank you, Mr. G. Seeing no one, uh, coming down to discuss requires a simple majority vote for indefinite postponement. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, no? It does pass unanimously. Article 20, Community Preservation for some field lights. Mr. G?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 20 as printed in the warrant.
Been moved and seconded. Gotta get a little quicker, David. Um, been moved and seconded. Mr. G?
This article allows for use of CPC funds to restore field lighting at the recreation fields at the Freeman Kennedy School. When the new school was built, Eversource disconnected the power as part of putting in a new well at Freeman Kennedy. Significant electrical work was required, including reinstating the high-voltage power to operate the well. Now that power has been reestablished, the existing set of wooden light poles can be fitted with new bulbs with the wiring run overhead. The lights would be used up to 10 hours weekly in the early spring and late fall. The advisory committee voted to support this article by a vote of five in favor and two against. The main concerns were around the aesthetics of overhead wires and the potential impact of the lighting on the surrounding area. However, the prevailing view was that this is an appropriate cost-effective use of CPC funds to increase and extend the amount of field space in the town.
Thank you, Mr. G. Uh, seeing no one at the mics, uh, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, no? It does pass by a majority. CPA, I believe, some field irrigation. Mr. G?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 21 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Joyce. Um, Mr. G?
This article proposes to utilize $52,000 from the CPC undesignated reserve to extend and repair an irrigation system serving two soccer fields at the Freeman Kennedy School. The irrigation's water source is from an existing, from an existing well installed following approval from a previous town meeting. The funding for the proposed project comes from CPC funds and will not directly impact taxes.
Thank you, Mr. G. Seeing no one, uh, coming to discuss. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye!
All those opposed, no? It passes by a clear majority. Article 22, CPA pickleball courts. Mr. G?
Here we are, okay. Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 22 as printed in the warrant.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. G?
This article requests $112,600 for the engineering, grading, striping, fencing, and paving of three pickleball courts in the area that is currently a lightly-used beach volleyball court at the Pond Street Recreation Complex. The recreation director has indicated a very high number of requests for pickleball facilities. The Recreation Commission has been actively trying to find a place to put courts and has ruled out many other options. One of the courts will be ADA-accessible with a path from the nearby parking lot and a larger area around it. The advisory committee voted to support this article by a vote of six in favor with one abstention.
Questions, comments? Sir?
Hi, Ben Sprague, 264 Main Street. Um, so my question is, um, on the research done by pickleball, it's a brand-new sport. We, uh, we tend to do trendy things in this country. Things last for about four or five years, and then they decline. If anybody's, the studies of pickleball recently, the numbers are declining dramatically. Also, we have, uh, existing tennis courts at the recreational spaces that can be adapted into pickleball courts for, um, a fraction of the cost. All you need to do is paint, uh, additional lines and have the ability to lower the nets about three inches. So I, I think a $71 charge for something that we can probably do for under $10,000 is just a waste of funds in the town. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like Ms. Proto to have a comment on, on either, if you're an expert, or conversion of tennis courts to pickleball courts.
Anne Proto, I'm the recreation director. Uh, we absolutely did look at the possibility of, um, lining the tennis courts for pickleball. Unfortunately, our, those tennis courts were built about 24 years ago now. They were never, they were not built correctly, and they started cracking within five years. They are to a point that you almost cannot play tennis on them. They are to a point that you almost cannot play tennis on them, and we actually contacted people about fixing the surfaces and lining them, and none of them wanted to take the responsibility or the liability to do that. So that was ruled out immediately. We are actually taking a, and pickleball actually has been around for a couple, at least a couple of decades now. It has gained popularity, and there could be some tailoring off. I mean, ups and downs, but we have had many, many requests. I've had more requests for pickleball courts than any other sport recently, although we do have soccer and such already. So, so, you know, but that is a very valid question about lining pickleball, lining the tennis courts, because that is actively done in many places. So.
Thank you, Ms. Proto. At this mic over here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Fred Goodridge. I live at 29 North Street. And I hate to be the get-off-my-lawn guy, but $112,000 for a pickleball field, can we, is there any other use for this money that we could possibly find? What happens when pickleball goes the way of a hula hoop? It says here that the Recreation Director has indicated a very high number of requests. I would like to ask the Recreation Director if she knows what the very high number is, roughly. This, to me, this is like putting in a bocce court or a highlight front on. Ma'am?
Well, I'll, I'll ask the question. So Ms. Proto, if you ballpark that, if you have that information on requests?
So I don't have an actual count. I did not keep an actual count, but we've had, I've had not only individuals contact me, I've had groups, pickleball groups, contact me. I can tell you that we offer pickleball instruction, and we offer four classes a week, and they're full at, so we have about 64 people taking lessons in Norfolk inside, in the gym, every, every week, as it is. And those people have definitely expressed interest, as well as other, other groups as well.
Thank you, Ms. Proto.
So would you say it's less than 140 people?
So I'm, again, I'll allow the question. Questions come, we're not, we don't have back-and-forth discussions here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I'm not sure of the relevance, but...
So if I was to, so the, the number I had is for the people taking the classes in, in Norfolk right now. And then we've been contacted by other groups to see if we have tournament space so they can join, so that, I mean, altogether, there probably are more than 140 people. I truly did not keep count, though, so, and I did not ask how many people were in those organizations.
Thank you, Ms. Proto.
Thank you.
Thank you for the questions.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. So if it costs low money to convert a tennis court to pickleball, and if we spend the money to create three new pickleball courts, could we spend some low money to end up with also tennis courts?
Well, I'm sure Ms. Proto may ask us at some point for some money for the tennis courts as well.
So, so as a tennis player, I will say previous tennis player, only because of injury, I would love to have new tennis courts in town. Those tennis courts, I've been looking into it for years, need to be pulverized. It would cost about $300,000 to redo those two tennis courts. It's out, it's astronomical money. I understand that, especially for people who are not interested in tennis or pickleball. And we are also eventually gaining additional land around Pond Street, so we don't want to make that type of commitment right now. The pickleball courts are close to the, a very important part of the pickleball courts are, they are an accessible sport, and they are being built close to the parking lot, and they will have accessible access. We are very much in need of more accessible athletic facilities in our town. We are not, we do not have, our ADA compliance is not good. I'm actually in the process of trying to write a grant to get an assessment, but this will allow for that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Proto. At this mic.
She took my thunder. I just wanted to see if they were going to be accessible, because that would be the only place where wheelchair chairs could get to at this point, at the Pondville Recreation Center. So if we can get more accessibility for wheelchair chairs and put a pickleball court in for them, I think that would be great. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Gary Sullivan, Sixberry Lane. I sit on the CPC, so we've talked about this a lot. I dislike pickleball, and I also bemoan the loss of our skateboard park, so I'm still bitter about that, but I am going to vote yes on this, because this seems like a reasonable request for recreation.
Thank you. I'd love to see you on a skateboard out there. Ma'am?
I'll give you lessons for pickleball, see if you like the sport. Noel Tenelli, 8 Noon Hill Ave. in Norfolk. Yeah, I know, I figured this is probably, is this okay? Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the country. I'm a schoolteacher in another district. We have been teaching, I'm not a gym teacher, but we have been teaching our kindergarteners and up, all the way up through high school, pickleball for the last couple of years. I believe they're teaching it in gym class in Norfolk as well. I have played pickleball in every single town around Norfolk. Norfolk is the only town that does not have courts. And everywhere I go, people say, "Where are you from? You don't live in town. I don't recognize you." No, I live in Norfolk. They don't have pickleball courts in Norfolk? Not, they're very welcoming people, but the point is, I don't know what to say. And I, you know, I've been, I was on the Rec Commission for nine years, and I talked to Anne about this for a long time. Lots and lots of people have been asking Anne for pickleball courts, so I'm really pleased to see it on here, and I hope you support it, because $112,000 for three courts is actually a really good deal, considering what it costs to build just one tennis court. So thank you.
Sir, last comment.
I'm going to let you do this.
Just, sure.
I'll take it. Given the support for pickleball, I just want to say I am for pickleball. Pranit Machirov, Seven River Path, I wasn't planning on commenting, but after hearing the gentleman who came first, who talked about reusing the tennis courts, now my kids and I, we do play and use on, use the tennis courts. It's in really bad shape, as it has been acknowledged. And many places, Rice, Rantham Rice, Four Kicks, a whole lot of places use their tennis courts and repaint the lines for pickleball. And I've never seen the tennis courts used all the time. It's usually just a few hours in the evenings. And my question is, I think the Recreation Director must have already pointed out, why couldn't you replan a little better and reuse those tennis courts, redo them, so that you don't have to spend more money later for the tennis courts and you use it for pickleball? I'm sure you've all done your homework, but I do agree with the gentleman who said, "Why cannot we think of reusing it?" That's all.
I think she answered the question as to just the massive expense, because you'd have to get to a baseline condition. And if you have anything else to add, I...
And accessibility. The tennis courts are not accessible.
So two reasons.
So it's going to be $125,000 plus another $300,000 eventually.
Plus more for accessibility, probably. Last word?
Ken Fitzgerald, 15 Oakview, member of the Advisory Committee. I work in municipal government, obviously not here. I will tell you, we've heard a lot of preludes tonight. Fire chief has needs down the road. Schools have needs. Police Department has needs. We just heard the need. $300,000 is the next ask. So why not just do it right at once, as opposed to spending $112 now and then $300 next year? I'm assuming for less than $412, we could probably do it in one shot. So we know the $300 is coming next. Let's just do it right. And volleyball was obviously popular at one time. Now we're tearing that out. And this body probably allocated money for that 20 years ago, so.
I'm going to have a comment over here. We don't have to have an answer to, I think, to every, every question, sir.
Bob Pashke, Stop River Road. I'm a member of the CPC, Community Preservation Committee. The funds for the CPC can only be used for certain purposes and under certain conditions. I don't believe that we could use them for the tennis courts to replace them. To build new, though, the new pickleball courts, they can be approved. These are CPC funds. You've already paid the taxes on them. I don't know what would happen if the tennis courts came up, whether we'd be able to vote on that. The CPC could provide funds for it.
That's a, that's a, that's a future thing. We've got pickleball courts here, and I appreciate that you want to answer. I think everyone knows which way they're voting here. So I think a vote for this is for the pickleball courts. A vote against it is not for pickleball courts. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
Okay. I'm just, I'm going to do just a standing visual without having to count it. All those in favor, stand up. Okay, be seated. All those opposed, stand up. The ayes have it. It passes by a majority. Closest vote of the night, pickleball. Let's let, have that be the headline. Article 23, some CPA expenses related to Town Hill. Mr. Craig.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 23 as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Craig.
The Town Hill gazebo and infrastructure, including the electrical and irrigation systems, are in need of repair. Many of the irrigation heads and electrical outlets do not work, which has made town events like the holiday lights a challenge. This article funds $71,350 required to get the construction documents, though construction costs will be covered in a future article.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Mr. Rosenberg, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm curious about how much money is available in the CPA fund that could be used for things like this. I, you know, we've voted on several things that were expending CPA funds, and I don't know how, how much is there.
Fair question. Do we have someone, Todd or anyone else, that can give us a report on what we have? Cindy? Ms. Andre, still chair?
Yes. Cindy Andre, Chair of CPC. I'm also at 17 Worcester Road. We have monies within the fund that are already reserved for ongoing projects. We have unencumbered monies, which is what this is coming out of. The undesignated fund is at $3 million. Our open space fund is at 91.5, 91,500. Our affordable housing, which we just appropriated monies from tonight, is at about 139,500. And the historical preservation fund has 733,543, so the total is just shy of 4 million.
Thank you, Ms. Andre. Question over here on the other mic.
Yes, I'm just questioning whether the $71,000 is a good expenditure. I mean, it seems to me you could call, you know, put out to bid to an electrician and say, you know, fix all the outlets, and they all bid on it, and now you've fixed all the outlets, and then do the same thing with irrigation with Carpenter, just say, restore it the way it was.
Well, there's still procurement here, so that process will still happen. This is just the source of funds.
Well, no, it's for assessment of needs. That's my question. Do we really need to assess the needs, or can we just put it out to bid? Or is that not prudent?
I'm not going to speak to the wisdom of it. Normally, you, if you appropriate money without knowing what you need, it's generally viewed as appropriating too much money or too little, so that's why we do an assessment. If Justin seems to want to make a comment here.
Real briefly, we previously attempted this article, and Advisory Committee gave us some good guidance. We didn't allocate enough money. So we've allocated a decent amount. We think this is the high level. We will do the procurement process. If the amount is lower, we won't utilize that full $71,000. One thing we do want to highlight with this project as well is going, we are working to make it ADA accessible, so usually that requires some more additional costs. So I think that probably will answer your question.
Okay, so it's a change to what existed there?
From the original scope of our first presentation with the work of Anne and some departments, it's a little more enhanced. We want to do the project right, but like I said, we will do a procurement process.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, you have a comment?
Blake Logan, 23 Cleveland. The town does some amazing stuff down there, the gazebo. I think almost everyone here has seen a farmer's market or something like that, so I say we go for it. It's one of the, one of the best uses of that space, so if we can't plug things in to get artists or anything like that down there, what good is it? So I'd say we should do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready for a vote here. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes by a majority. Article, Article 24, Establishment of a Regional School Stabilization Fund. Mr. G.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 24 as printed in the warrant.
Moved and seconded. Mr. G.
Approval of this article, along with approval of similar articles by, excuse me, by Rantham Plainville, would enable the King Philip Regional School District to establish a stabilization fund specifically for future, potential future capital purchases. This would allow the KP School Committee to include in its annual budgeting process deposits into the accounts, such as from E and D funds, within certain legal limits. By statute, the stabilization fund can be appropriated by a vote of two-thirds of all the members of the KP School Committee for any purpose for which regional schools, districts may borrow money. The Advisory Committee voted unanimously to support this article.
You seem, you seem like you want to speak, so, sure. There's no one commenting, but if you can give us a brief, brief overview on benefits for KP.
Thank you. Rich Jolay, King Philip Superintendent, just to give a little bit more information, our school committee did vote unanimously for this. I do think the town administrators' comments in the packet were spot-on. Just to clarify, the 20-year bond from the 2006 school renovations will expire in two years. Our greatest priority will be to replace the roofs, but that would be, you know, a bigger ticket item outside of this. This fund we're hoping to establish, you can do this, you can establish a stabilization fund for either capital or special education. We don't have either. And some examples besides turf field replacement at the high school, tennis court replacement as well, and ours also, you know, will need to be pulverized or in place. We're looking to improve security at the high school. Some HVAC system work at both the middle school and the high school, paving around the middle school, site improvements for the playing fields at the high school, some flooring and carpet, in the form of carpeting at both the high school and middle school, flooring for the gymnasium, both the high school and the middle school, and some electrical work. So that just gives some examples of what the monies could be used for, and if we are able to put, turn back monies into this at the, it won't be this year, but in future years, we could then tackle some of those projects without having to come back to the towns for them as a larger ticket item, or perhaps some of these monies could help offset the cost to the towns for a bigger ticket item like a turf field replacement. Thank you.
Requires a simple majority. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 26 is a zoning change to our zoning table. Mr. Beachkovsky.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 26 as shown on the screen and printed in the handout entitled Article 26, Schedule of Use Regulations.
Second? Been moved and seconded. Mr. Beachkovsky.
This article further improves the schedule of use table that was approved in the 2023 Fall Town Meeting. During the last few months of use, the Planning Board realized that some clarification on districts and categories was needed. This is part of a continued effort to make the use tables easy to understand and responsive to community needs. The summary of changes are available in the handout, and you can see where they've, they've consolidated some of the districts, clarified some, some uses, and generally just made it easier to find exactly what somebody would want as a potential use within the tables.
Thank you. Planning Board recommendation and any other brief comments you have on this?
So Brian pretty much summed it up. We did want to provide a handout, which hopefully you were able to pick up. It is in color, because in the warrant, it's a little hard to read on that paper, black and white, bold, strike-through. So we did want to provide a color handout that you can see on the screen. There is a little legend there that does show the changes. Brian did a great job of summarizing. We put this in, we voted on this a year ago to create the table. We put it into use. We needed to make some improvements to it, and so that's what we're presenting tonight.
Okay, thank you. So don't go too far in case people have questions. Mr., I think Mr. Diamond was first before Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Diamond, 84 Seconk Street, Norfolk. I wanted to make a motion to amend my part of this. Could you help me with that, Mr. Moderator?
Maybe I could help you. Why don't you tell me what you have in mind?
On page three, it's home occupation, and I wanted to amend the uses in the B1, C1A, C1B, C1C, and C1D to be an allowable use, or permission to have a home occupation in the B1, C1A, C1B, C1C, and C1D.
And what are they, what are they showing?
Right now, it's not permitted. There's a no next to it. And I would like to change that to yes, given that there is so much housing in the B1 with all the, I think I counted over 140 housing units, and since COVID, a lot of people are working from home, doing a home occupation.
Okay, so we can help you on form. Before we get to form, though, I wanna hear from the planning board as to whether or not this schedule had, because I know a lot of this was just cleanup stuff and just putting it into this form, if this schedule had changes with respect to that particular use, or if this was just intended for the purposes of clarifying issues with respect to the uses in the particular districts.
So there was no changes to that use in particular, but there are a few, there are a few deletions of uses, and then there's one addition. The food trucks was, was never in there, so we did now allow food trucks in the, in the districts.
So, and the reason I ask Mr. Diamond is, you know, when, when these articles go in, there's like, it's a notice document, so the warrant article is a notice document, so they, they highlight some changes. I think if you wanted to go and change those uses, and that's a fundamental, going from no to yes, and there was no notice throughout the planning board hearing process or for this town meeting that those particular uses were changing, I'm a little reluctant to expand the scope, because there might be an equal number of people like you who would be adamantly against that change, that wouldn't have noticed that, that kind of fundamental change with respect to that use where it's coming. So that, that's why I asked the question of Mr. Peck, and, you know, so I wanna be careful about allowing something that's that fundamental without kind of having it be within the scope, which I discussed at the beginning of the meeting. Do you follow what I'm saying?
It sounds like you're not gonna permit me to make an amendment.
Right. Right, well, I think, and the reason is, and, you know, you and I have been talking about zoning for a long time, is I would rather have an amendment like that, that fundamentally changes where that particular use can happen, go through a process that has planning board hearings, and it's discussed.
I did bring that up at the hearings.
Okay, was it ever proposed as part of the original?
Not from the planning board, no.
So what, I'm gonna disallow it, just, but I'm encouraging you, as I've done in the past too, let's make it either a citizen's petition, or somehow work with the planning board, as I know you know how to do, and bring it back. I'm not saying it's a bad idea or a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. Mr. Rosenberg.
Yep. I'd appreciate hearing as specifically as possible what the changes that, to the regulations put in by this table are. I know Mr. Peck mentioned something, but I guess, I appreciate elaboration of what changes as a result of this table.
Yeah, if you could summarize some of the high points and the changes, new stuff.
New stuff. So, so we currently had the B3, B4 in one column. We decided to split that out. As you can see, that there's a whole B4 column that's now green. Same thing with the C3, C5, that was combined. We split those up to be very specific into two columns. We did the same concept with the C1 off. It is now specific into the 41C off district, C1A, B, C, and D. So those, those are the column changes that happened, and you can see as highlighted by the legend there. We then decided that since we have the four C1 off highway districts, there's no need for that one that just says C1 off highway, so that is red, and that column will be eliminated. So that, that makes a specific column for each zoning district that we have, specific uses for. So that, that's the columns. And then we do have, on page four, we have two uses. If you look at the rows, there's two rows that are red, so we do have two rows that where we've eliminated that, just because it's, it's included somewhere else, or it's, where it's redundant or contradictory. So the first one is allow uses, all uses allowed in the off highway, that was removed. Business offices existing other than ancillary to be permitted use, that was also removed. Then on page five, there's a new use, so a new row called food trucks, so that, you can see that that is allowed. And then there was a deletion, a couple rows down, is the garaging of commercial vehicles ancillary to an allowed or special permit use. And that was, and then if you look at the last page, page seven, where it's not, it's, it just says special permit planning board and SPZBA, it really should just say SPZB. So there was one additional change there.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Okay, this zoning change requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 27, general bylaw regarding repair of private ways.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 27 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded and moved and seconded, Ms. Terry.
The Advisory Committee recommends approval of this article. The addition of the language presented before you would largely upstate guidelines into our local bylaws. The Advisory Committee, after a short discussion, believed that this is a necessary addition to our bylaws and unanimously voted in favor of the article.
Questions, comments?
Cherry Miller, Old Populatic Road. Could you define private ways for me, please?
Well, it could be a lengthy definition, and I'm a lawyer, so we could be here for a while, but essentially, anything that the town meeting hasn't accepted as a public way, and anything that might predate that process, but the town meeting would have to make it a public way.
Can you tell me why, what's my question? Why would we be an unacceptable road?
For a road to become accepted as a public way, there's a few different processes that it could be. There are older ways that go way back, that could be public through a process called dedication, but more typically, someone either originating through the planning board or through the select board would go through a process of approving a plan, and then presenting it to town meeting for acceptance, and then taking ownership of the way. So it's a three-step process. So if, if you lived on a private way, for example, and you wanted it to become a public way, then you could seek to have it added to the town meeting warrant for acceptance. The select board would all, would also have to sign off on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Sir?
Charles McCarthy, Nine River Path. I live on one of these roads. When I bought my house back in 2014, nobody ever told me I was living on an unacceptable road. This didn't happen till about a year ago, when my, my roads stopped being plowed. We had to call Justin and get a hold of the DPW supervisor to find out why it wasn't being plowed anymore, and that was their answer to me, it's an unacceptable road. I wanna know why weren't they accepted?
So again, so, and plowing is different than repairs, but the reason why a roadway isn't accepted could be a lot of reasons. Normally with new subdivisions, like that we see, it's a natural part of the process when they're done. With older roads that fell through the cracks a little bit, then the process would be, as I just described previously, that either the citizens seeking support from the select board and town meeting would have to make that effort, or the town could choose, if they felt the roads were in good enough condition, to start that process themselves. So the why, I don't know why your road was never accepted. I doubt anyone here has an explanation.
But now I'm saddled with it, though.
Well, this, this article actually provides a means where the town can choose. So towns have the right to plow unacceptable private ways, they don't have the right to repair them.
Oh, no, I've done a lot of research, I know.
So this actually provides some benefit for owners of properties on private ways, because it provides the keys to the town to do some repairs on your ways.
And what starts the town from making a motion to no longer take care of private ways?
To no longer, the town already doesn't take care of private ways.
But I mean, they can make it permanent, so that we have to go out and find somebody to plow the road and fix the road. Will I get a tax rebate for that?
You do not. Sir?
Pranit Magitura, Seven River Path. I've been a resident for 16 years. My two kids were born right here in Norfolk, and take those streets every morning, like every other kid in Norfolk. The street that I live on has existed since the 1940s. All these years, the town has been maintaining the street and clearing the snow during the winter. Things changed when we had new town administration during COVID. There was a disruption in service without any notice, any letter, any communication. After running from pillar to post, we've been informed in the last year that our street is unacceptable, also interchangeably called private. This was news to us. All information from previous owners, deeds, title searches, plot plans, including previous information from the town itself, not one document discloses that this street is private or unacceptable. It is unfair, frustrating, and downright disturbing that the town is punishing and penalizing residents for something that the town itself, in its advisory board meeting, and Mr. Moderator, you use that phrase right now, as having fallen through the cracks. We understand that the new bylaw provides legal standing for the DPW to provide minimal services. We appreciate that, but it does not address the larger issue of providing the same level of services that other town roads and residents receive. We pay the same taxes as everyone else. Instead of penalizing and discriminating against residents who live on such roads, the town should come up with a plan to grandfather and accept these roads as is, because these streets have existed well before any of the modern rules were formed. Other towns, including Franklin, because that's our closest, Plainville and all, all towns around us, already have plans in place to grandfather such streets. We don't. I do wanna acknowledge that the current town administrator, Justin Casanova-Davis, is the first person I know of, in my 16 years, to have visited our neighborhood, listened to our concerns, and is trying to rectify it. So he needs all the support that we can give him to fix this issue. We are willing to work with the town and will support the article tonight in good faith, but it is unacceptable to us that you put a Band-Aid on the issue and ignore the elephant in the room. So, I had a few other things to say, but I'll end by saying that do not sweep some of your own residents back into those cracks again. Fix the issue and give us the services we deserve.
Hi, Kristen Ballish, 15 Kingsbury. I wanna say a few things, because I've been following this. I do not live on a private way, but Wiley Road is right next to me, and I know that that's almost a swear word in DPW, Wiley Way, Wiley Road, because it is in disrepair so often, and it is an unincorporated road. What I have seen and followed here is that this is the town's effort to rectify these wrongs, and this is the first step we can take to do something immediately. In order to go back and find all the roads that are private ways, I feel like I heard some insane number, like well over 100 in this town, and I know there's work being done to make sure we have a full audit and list of those streets. Until that time, the work to move them all to public status can't happen. It will have to happen over time. But this can happen now. Right now, there are streets that you're hearing, a lot of us around Populatic, Kingsbury, some of the older streets in town. These are not private ways because we live in the new subdivisions. These are old, old streets that never got brought in at the time. I'm not going to blame the current administration for that. They weren't here. I was only here, I only moved here 10 years ago, right? Many of us moved here without all the information. It doesn't mean that the town doesn't care. I've been seeing them do a lot of work here, and I'm actually really supportive of this first step, so that they can come back to start working on the streets that we've talked about today, and I'm hopeful, and I feel very strongly, that from what I hear, Mr. Crane and others say, that this is going to be an ongoing project, and I hope we, you know, kinda keep their feet to the fire, but I don't have any concern that they won't. So I'm very in favor of this, and I hope people support it. Thank you guys for your work.
Thank you. Do we need, really need it? I think people are ready to vote in favor here.
Just wanna clarify, just a couple of quick points. So we have less than 40 roads in town that are unacceptable in one manner or another. Some of those are fairly new and going through the process. As some residents have alluded to, some of them date back to the 1940s. So there is a number of roads here that go, that run the gambit. This just allows me to essentially do mainly what I'm doing already, to spend a limited amount of money on roadways so that emergency services are available, so that fire, police, and ambulances can get to residents' homes, that, you know, they deserve that much at a minimum. So this allows that process to happen as we move forward and work through the road acceptance process.
Thank you, Blair. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 28, general bylaw for water theft.
Mr. Moderator, move to approve Article 28 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Explanation.
The Advisory Committee recommends the approval of this article. This bylaw brings us into compliance with state mandates issued by the DEP. They're the ones who issue our Town Water Management Act permit. The language creates a penalty for anyone found illegally tapping into a fire hydrant or town water without a meter or permit from the town. This is part of a water conservation plan from the DEP to the town of Norfolk, and is common language in most communities across the Commonwealth.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, Cherry Miller, Old Populatic Road. You make it difficult for us to hook up to your town water. We have well. We don't hook up to your town water because your fee, just the permit fee, is $2,750. Makes no sense to Peter and I, we're retired. We can't afford that kind of fee to hook up to the town water. We just don't understand why it's such a high amount, just for a fee. We don't understand it.
Thank you. General bylaw, simple majority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Before I get to the, the last article of the evening, I just wanted to thank everyone over at, at Justin's table for all the hard work they've put into this. I wanna thank the Advisory Board. I wanna thank especially Carol and Todd. I wanna thank the Police Department for helping out tonight. I think there was a lot of discussion about how raucous this town meeting could be. I thought we had some great debate, and I really appreciate everyone coming out and having a very civil, very productive meeting. With that, our last article. Mr. Craig.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 29 as printed in the warrant.
Been moved and seconded, Mr. Craig.
The purpose of this article is to amend the language in the current restricted water uses bylaw, which the Department of Public Works and Select Board have authority to declare a state of water supply conservation. Language outlined in this article will assist in maintaining adequate water supply for residents and managing natural resources responsibly, especially in the face of increasing variability and weather patterns and climate conditions. Language was, language was added and removed in 292-2 definitions, 292-4 Declaration of State of Water Supply Conservation, and 292-5 Restricted Water Uses.
Thank you. Sir, you have a question, comment?
And you may rule that this is extending it, but on 292-4, on page 21, 292-4B3, it can be declared an emergency if there's a mechanical failure. But I wonder if it should include things like contamination of a well, or if there's a power generator failure for an extended period of time. That could cause a water emergency, but it's not included here. And there's maybe other reasons that, that we would want to include a, a negative water emergency.
So is that just a comment, or do you have a question for DPW?
No, I'm just stating that I don't think it goes far enough. And I was wondering if other things were considered besides mechanical failure that could cause a well to go down.
Well, you mean in terms of you want to expand upon the list here?
Probably. I'm sure you won't let it, let it allow it, but I just thought I'd bring it up. Because if you have a contamination, the well's offline, and now you're having a water emergency, but I don't see that that's covered here.
I mean, I might recommend, rather than going through a lengthy amendment process, that, that you probably have this discussion with, with DPW and if we have to add to this because it rounds out the available opportunities to regulate appropriately. Tom, did you have a question or?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If you look at Section 292-4A, the Select Board may declare a state of water supply conservation upon an affirmative vote of the majority of the members. I believe that might include the authority you're looking for. I think they have the general authority to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Rosenberg.
I'd like to understand the motivation for this change. Perhaps a brief description of what is intended to be accomplished by this change.
Barry LaRiviera, Assistant DPW Director. The change to this bylaw was for us to comply to DEP standards. It was really a request of theirs that we include it into our document as part of our water permitting process. That's all it really was.
Mr. Moderator, I thank you for that statement of the motivation was to comply to DEP standards. Can you offer a little more explanation of what the DEP's motivation was? That is, why they want us to do whatever?
It's actually, it's actually right there on the screen, the whole description of the process. So as part of our Water Management Act review, the DEP went over a whole bunch of aspects of our existing permit, including what we have in our bylaws. They wanted to withdraw, basically drop our withdrawal limit from 1.062 MGD to 0.48. We fought with them and said that was too much. We agreed at the 0.161, which they gave us, and the caveat was, is we kind of need to add this stuff to our bylaws. So it was us working together with DEP to make sure that our water capacity volume for the town of Norfolk didn't drop. All right.
They want us to conserve more water.
Requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Mr. Luth, you have a motion for me? Motion to adjourn and dissolve the meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.